Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting in order. For the record, today's date is February 27, 2024, and the time is 9:03. We will now have a moment of silence, silent reflection, or silent prayer. Thank you. Supervisor Rickman, would you please lead us in the pleasurable presence? Clerk of the Board, may I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Canepa?
Here.
Supervisor, I apologize, Supervisor Ding.
Oh, yes, here.
Supervisor Patty?
Yes, here.
Supervisor Rickman?
Here.
And Chairman Vieux Pudois.
Present. We will now have recognition and presentations. Clerk of the Board, may you please be the first recognition?
Thank you, Chairman. Our first recognition this morning is an initiative by our Chairman Vieux Pudois to recognize nonprofit organizations throughout the year. And our first recognition this morning is to the Bread of Life, and I would like to invite representatives from Bread of Life down to the podium as I read this recognition. This is being presented to the Bread of Life in recognition of your organization, which has constantly provided food to families, individuals, and the elderly since 2008. When founded by Board President Gina Valdez Beric Camonte, if I sounded that correctly, your remarkable growth, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic, where you distributed nearly four million worth of food in 2020 and 2021, reflects unwavering commitment to alleviating hunger and making a significant impact on the lives of others. Thank you for your dedicated and outstanding service to the citizens of our county. Presented this 27th day of February 2024. Chairman Vieux Pudois.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Gina. Good morning, Chris. Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say, wow. Because I remember when I first walked through these halls many years ago, when I first started Bread of Life, and I stood before here, before the board, asking for funding because I have this mission and I just wanted to help families that were struggling. And I see how hard work and dedication really pays off.
And I thank you for the recognition. I thank God for giving me the strength and the energy and for surrounding me with people that are smart. And I thank God for Chris, who's taken the baton, and he's done a very good job the last couple of years, and I know that he's going to do more. And I just think every one of you that have supported us because you've been a big part of what we do into the community. And I know that there's a lot of people out there that appreciate what Bread of Life does. And it comes back to the help that you all have given us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Chris, would I say a few words?
Thank you so much to the board. You guys are amazing, really. The connections that we've made throughout the years because of you guys and the impact in the community that you've gotten behind and said, hey, we really believe in what you're doing. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, but thank you so much.
Well, as a Board of Life member, I'm on the board, and I can tell you right now that you guys are doing an amazing job for the community. I've witnessed so many smiling faces from the food that you guys provide for families, single mothers, just everyone in general. And I know, Gina, you started this, you've done an amazing job. When I first started, I went and helped you one day, and I went home, I was so tired, I couldn't walk the next day. And Chris, you're just an incredibly hard worker. I mean, I just, I really admire how much you work for the community and how much you care. I have other board members who would like to say a few words. Supervisor Rickman?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you both for being here. You guys do a great job. The organization does a great job. And it's not just here in Stockton. I mean, it's throughout the entire county, from, you know, all the way east to Escalon and all the way, you know, west to Mountain House. So, you know, we appreciate everything you guys do. And I know our community, I can speak on behalf of Fifth District, of course, that, you know, you guys are very well thought of. And, you know, thank you guys very much. God bless.
Supervisor Ding.
Thank you. Good morning. So I guess I'm going to start with a mea culpa. About a year ago, when I took this seat, you know, we're all on like, what is it, 22 boards, commissions, and you have all these nonprofits. You had Bread of Life, Life of Bread, Bread of the Cross. You know, it was just, it was so overwhelming. And there was one group out there doing something that I quite frankly don't think our mission of getting the homeless off the street, they were aiding, you know, that effort. And I thought it was Bread of Life. And I was quite frankly chastised from a lot of corners that explained exactly what you did. And I've since apologized to Gina and Chris for it. But publicly, I just wanted to say thank you because you are a helping hand up, and that's what's important. So God bless.
Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chairman. Gina and Chris, I mean, every single day is full of challenges, and you get something done, and then there's a whole new day. There has to be levels of accomplishment and needs that are being met. And it's your leadership, it's your passion. It's that relenting pursuit of just making sure you can do more to help others. And we truly appreciate it. It makes a difference, and we're thankful to have you in the community and give a little recognition today. So keep going. We truly appreciate you.
Vice Chairman Canepa.
Thank you. You guys are both beautiful human beings. The work that you do, I mean, we go over there, and it's not just a matter of giving out food. You give out joy, and it's just amazing that the programs with the special needs adults. I mean, one day, we're over there, and Miguel hooked it up so he could have a ride with the sheriff. He didn't want to go in his police car. He wanted to be in the sheriff's car. And just the sheer joy that you brought to that young man, the barbecuing for him and the certificates. And I mean, it's more than just handing out food. And I mean, like you said, you take $10,000 and multiply it into $70,000. That's bang for your buck, too. So I mean, the community work that you do, the lives that you touch and the people that you teach, you know, with your services is absolutely amazing. And you do it with honor and dignity. So I appreciate what you guys do. I wish we could give you more money and you could do more things. But I mean, everyone, you know what I mean? And you guys, it's great. You threw picnic lunch for the staff over in the stands in the, I don't know what we're calling it now, over there by the Rose Garden. So I mean, what you guys do in the community is seen and greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Will the board please join me in a photo? I'll have to search to get it for you, please. Clerk of the Board, we have the next recognition, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next recognition was requested by Tom Patty of the Third Supervisory District. And this is the posthumous recognition of the former Laos Family Community Empowerment President Steve Long Hr. And I would like to invite Sally Herr and representatives from the Laos Family Community to the podium as we read this recognition. This is being presented posthumously to Steve Long Hr in recognition of his remarkable life and enduring legacy encompassing personal achievements and selfless contributions to both family and community. Graduating from Franklin High School after migrating from Laos as a child, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in business and serving as a Board President to the Laos Family Community Empowerment from 2019 to 2023, and being instrumental in the tremendous success of the Stockton Mong New Year Annual Celebration, which in addition to being a celebration, assists in teaching the community about the tradition of the Mong culture and people. The San Juan County Board of Supervisors is pleased to honor his memory and his legacy and has presented this certificate on this 27th day of February 2024. Chairman Vieux Pudois, Supervisor Patty?
Thank you. Please share a couple of words, and Supervisors would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Board of Supervisors and everyone in attendance. Thank you so much for having us today. My name is Sally Herr, and I'm the current Vice President of Laos Family Community Empowerment. Here with me today, we have these children and wife along with our board member. I really want to thank Supervisor Tom Patty for this moment and for the recognition, and also to his assistant, Michael Anderson, for helping with putting this together. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for also reviewing this recognition and approving it as well. Mr. Steve Hr was an inspirational, empowering, and selfless. Was, he was more than ever a loving and caring son, brother, husband, and father. Family is at the center of everything for Mr. Hr. He created events that helped bond families and friends in his personal life and in his professional life as President of Laos Family Community Empowerment. He created unity within our community. He brought leaders from all over San Juan County to come together and support the Mong community. He also brought leaders to celebrate the San Juan County Mong New Year Festival that we have every single year for the past four years that he was president. He is the epitome of a true community leader. Thank you for helping us honor Mr. Steve with this proclamation and recognition. We greatly appreciate everyone in here.
Yeah, I want to thank you for being here. And for many people that may have missed it, just recently and a couple of our meetings ago, we had a Mong celebration with music and dancers. And I have to tell you, I'm touched by Steve's presence when he came in. You can see the meaning and the depth of what it meant to be here and have that recognition, the efforts he puts into it, and the pride he had. But there was something more. There was a deep, there was a deep love, there was a true, I think, that he embraced this community and his community, the culture. But you could just tell there was something more going on in his life, and I didn't know. I remember hugging him and saying hello to him and thanking him for helping bring this and put it together. But there was just a special element to him and a level of appreciation that still touches me to this day. And for us to give him some respect and recognition is our true privilege. And thank you all for being here. I know that's a devastating loss. Words will never, ever fill that gap. I just know that we're lucky and blessed that he is here in spirit, and he was here in his actions and the dedication, all that he gave to his friends, his family, and this community. So just a couple of words from our board members, please. Supervisor Rickman?
Thank you, Supervisor. Patty and Chairman, and want to welcome the family. And, you know, it is an honor to be up here and recognize, you know, a great man who lived a remarkable life and, you know, left an enduring legacy here in San Juan County. And as you mentioned, you know, family is the most important thing to anyone. And just looking out here from the dais and seeing his family here is, and I think that's what we all try to leave behind is, you know, how do you, how do you know the mark that you left on the world? And you look at the individual's family, and he left a beautiful mark. So, you know, thank you for being here. It's an honor to be up here, recognized, and God bless each and every one of you.
Supervisor Canepa?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiments. It's legacy, and I mean, that's what it is because obviously we talk about diversity in the community here, and you guys are wholeheartedly part of that. So I mean, sorry for what you guys are going through, but he did make an impact on a lot of people's lives, and you can be very thankful for that. Thank you.
Supervisor Ding?
Thank you. To be honest with you, I'm more familiar with the bond and the relationship with the Mong community in America as it dates back to the, you know, the 60s and 70s and the suffering and everyone went through. I'm not as familiar with your relative, and I'd love to sit down and hear the stories, you know, personally with you. So thank you.
Chair, Chairman, before I turn, I just want to also recognize that the celebration that you brought forward in my seven-plus years here, it was one of the grandest and most spectacular. I really truly appreciate it. Our Chairman? Supervisor Patty, thank you for bringing this forward. So sorry for your loss. He was an amazing man. He did a lot for the Mong community, and I just want to thank you for just coming today and honor him. Thank you. Do you want to come down and take a picture, guys?
Sorry, Board of Supervisors. If I can have a moment to give to the family to see if they would like to say a few words, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rose, and today I am here to speak on behalf of my father, Steve Hr, and we also brought a picture of him. Here with me is my mother, my mother right here, my two sister, and my little brother. I'll try not to cry so much. We also have an older brother here, Ken, but he couldn't make it today. So however, we want to thank the San Juan County Board of Supervisors for this proclamation. It is with great honor to accept this high recognition from you, from you, from our father. Our father, Steve, became the President of Laos Family Community Empowerment in 2019 to 2023. He was devoted to bringing the Mong community together by organizing the annual Stockton Mong New Year in November. In doing so, this proclamation is proof of our father's hard work that he has put into this community. We thank you on behalf of our father, who's in a better place now. We know he would have been tremendously proud to have received this proclamation for all his great accomplishments. We thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, I think we're good. Would you like to join us for a picture? Gentlemen, would you like to come down?
floor? Supervisor Ding? Okay.
Clerk of the Board, we have the next recognition, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next recognition was requested by Supervisor Steve Ding of the Fourth Supervisory District. And this is the recognition of Animal Services Officers Marietta Adeline, Ian McQuade, and Susan Rodman of the San Juan County Sheriff's Office. And I would like to invite Officers McQuade and Rodman to the podium. I understand, I believe Officer Adeline is not available today. As I read this recognition, which is being presented in recognition of your quick and courageous response to the call from the community that resulted in the successful trapping of a pack of German shepherds and delivering them safely to the shelter demonstrated your commitment to the safety and well-being of both our human and animal residents in Maratha. Thank you for your prudent and judicious actions and outstanding service to the citizens of our county. Presented this 27th day of February 2024. Chairman Vieux Pudois and Supervisor Ding?
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank you. The job of government and its elected officials is to keep its public safe. That's the number one priority. And it's the unspoken heroes that go out there. I can't think, well, I can think of a few worse jobs. But that, you know, you've got to be on your toes. We have a void within your department for this, and we get calls, and especially the last few months, was calls for loose animals. Since our shelters are impacted and they're full, and we've got stray animals running all over, and we're trying to figure out, you know, how to deal with that, you're left with the phone calls. And it can be a dangerous situation. So when we heard what happened out there, I think people were more excited that you saved the horse than the people. But that's a subject for another day. I just wanted to thank you, and I wanted you to be recognized. I wanted everybody to know that you did answer the call of duty and got the pack off the streets. And that's why we're here, is to make sure our community's kept safe. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. It's nice to be recognized. Dogs are sometimes hard to catch.
Yeah, just thank you guys for recognizing what we do.
Retired Captain Rickman?
Retired Captain Rickman.
I got a promotion.
You got a promotion.
Thank you Supervisor Ding. Thank you both for the job that you do. And, you know, it's not just in one city, but the entire county and, you know, 24/7, all times of the night, you guys are responding and, you know, assisting, not just motorists and families, but, you know, the animals themselves to make sure they get to a place of safety so they don't get harmed. So continue the great work. God bless.
Supervisor Patty. Thank you Supervisor Ding. Here's another example of San Joaquin's finest. We appreciate the excellence and the standard that has been established throughout this entire county. And you guys are great representatives and a reflection of, from the top down and from the bottom up, what a great sheriff's department we have, the deputies, the rank and file, everybody contributes and does a great job and we want to thank you and appreciate it. Gentlemen from District Two, Supervisor Paul Canepa.
Thank you. You guys have one of those thankless jobs. Either the person is really happy to see you or really terrified to see you. So, I mean, what you do when you show up to each house or anywhere is individually different. And I thank you for putting, obviously, your lives on the line because sometimes a pack of dogs is very dangerous and people don't realize what they can do and how they do it with that herd mentality. So thanks for stepping up. Thank you Supervisor Ding for honoring these folks because I think it's important because you make up what makes San Joaquin County great. So, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Ding for bringing this forward. I can tell you right now, I appreciate you guys. District One, pit bulls everywhere, a lot of families, we get a lot of calls about loose dogs and you guys answer the call at all times. So thank you very much for your efforts and your hard work and your dedication.
And the supervisors down here for a photo? I gotta put my glasses on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Wait a minute, hold on. Mary's got like five of them down here. There you go. There you go. There we go. There you are. Thank you.
Clerk of the Board, we have the next recognition, please.
Our next recognition was requested by District Attorney Ron Freitas. And this is the recognition of District Attorney Investigator Two, Thomas Cantrell, for over 50 years of law enforcement service. And I would like to invite them down to the podium. As we read the certificate of recognition, which is being presented in recognition of your dedication, perseverance, and honorable service to the people of San Joaquin County for over 50 years in law enforcement and criminal investigations. From your service in the U.S. Army, your designation by the State of California as a Reserve Officer of the Year, to your continued service as a District Attorney Investigative Assistant Two. You have demonstrated exceptional commitment to the community of citizens you have sworn to serve and protect. The San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors thanks you for your many years of exemplary service, presented this 27th day of February 2024. Chairman Vipadwa.
Well, thank you and good morning. Thank you for being here. Would you like to say a few words? Would you like to say a few words?
Well, yes. Thank you Chairman Vipadwa, Vice Chairman Canepa, County Administrator Wilberding, members of the Board Supervisors. Thank you very much for this recognition of 50 years of law enforcement service. I wasn't even born when Investigator Cantrell started. So, you know, to put that in some type of perspective, but he was hired by the Stockton Police Department as a Reserve Officer, June 29, 1973. And during that time, he's been promoted and ranked as one of the highest ranking Reserve Officers with the Stockton Police Department. He's been appointed as Commissioner in the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission by Judge John Parker. And he's been awarded the Beratorial Service Award for his actions in 2000. He's also the Reserve Commander as of 2012. And in 2023, the State of California awarded him the Reserve Officer of the Year by the California Reserve Police Officers Association. He's joined the District Attorney's Office in 1997 under my predecessor, John Phillips. And he has 27 years of service with the county. We're very excited for all of this hard work because of his dedication, honesty, integrity, and how well-respected he is with his peers. But also his current assignment is backgrounds, which means that he has a hand in deciding who the next generation of district attorneys and district attorneys will be. And he is the gatekeeper, making sure that we have the right individuals coming on board in our office. And we're very happy to have him do that. 50 years is just actually a drop in the bucket. He actually has on top of that four years? Four years in the U.S. Army. So over 54 years of public service, which is absolutely no small accomplishment. So we'd like you to join us in congratulating him and commending him for this great accomplishment. We have a couple of guests here today. His other boss, Chief Stan McFadden of the Stockton Police Department is here and I think he'd like to say a few words.
Absolutely. Chief McFadden, would you please come forward?
Good morning, County Supervisors. Absolutely, Tom is an incredible human being. I had the pleasure of joining him at his Reserve Officer of the Year for the State of California. He has a great following. He's well-known throughout that association. I'm proud to be on the same team as him. When I go to the reins, I see him and he carries our SWAT, our SWAT folks have so much appreciation for him and his institutional knowledge. It's just great to be on the same team as him. Congratulations. Thank you.
By the way, the chief was, the chief was two years old when I got sworn in.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much for the recognition. It's been a long, long 50 years. In six months, I'll have 51 years. So I plan to stay as long as I can and everybody keeps asking me when I'm going to retire. I say one bad day. One bad day. We don't have anyone that likes to volunteer to do anything anymore because everybody wants to get paid. You need to go out to the community and look for people that would like to do something, given this two or three hours a day, once or twice a week. You will definitely get entertainment out of it and it will help you and us and everybody else in the city and the county. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, sir. Well, D.A. Freitas, I want to thank you for honoring gentlemen and 50 years of service is amazing and thank you for serving our country. And you have a wealth of knowledge that's unbelievable. I'd like to sit down with you one day and talk to you about it. I'd also take you out golf and we can beat up Iran. That'd be great. Supervisor Rickman, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations. And as our District Attorney Freitas mentioned, and I think you started your career and I wasn't born yet. So, you know, being law enforcement myself and, you know, I can just imagine what you've seen over such a great career, the changes of law enforcement, the changes in the community. I mean, you'd be a great person just to sit down with and talk and just to pick your brain and see all the things that you've seen. So congratulations. Thank you for your service to, you know, not just San Joaquin County, but the State of California. We appreciate it and God bless.
Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is fantastic. We have a full chamber today to give tribute and dedication to you and your service to not only our country, but for even such a longstanding period to your community, our community. We thank you. I appreciate that the chief, the DA are here, as well as so many others that could be. They are representative to the hundreds and actually probably thousands of people whose lives you've touched and affected and we as a county are better because of it. We truly thank you, respect and appreciate you.
Supervisor Ding.
Well, I do want to thank you for your service. But the last statement you made about getting individuals to volunteer, you know, I've always said that if I had to start one more department in this county, it'd be the Council of Elders. So they could tell us why they did what they did so we don't make the same mistakes too. But to advise and guide us. So even your advice in future years is one hell of a contribution. So, thank you.
Vice Chair Canepa.
I've known Tom for a few years from back on San Joaquin Park Street. So I'm glad that you're still at it. I mean, you're a great human being. You've always been honest and hardworking and I think this is awesome that we get to recognize you today. So thanks for all that you've done, not only for the community, but the people that you've helped and mentored along the way. So much appreciated.
Chairman, would you please join me for a photo?
He has a few fans. Would you mind if they come?
Absolutely. Would anyone like to speak? Chief, come forward if you'd like to join the picture.
We're going to move, we're going to move forward on the calendar day and move on to item number seven, the discussion of general government. The CAO's office approved and authorized a second addendum to the agreement for the property tax allocation upon annexation between the County of San Joaquin and the City of Manteca where areas developed on or before October 13, 2022. CAO Wilberding, would you like to comment or have the City of Manteca come forward?
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank you all for your support today for approval of our amendam for our property tax agreement that's before you for your consideration. And also I just wanted to take a few moments and to thank the team here at the county. This has taken us almost two years to get to this point. And actually, I just, I want to list off a few people that have been really great to work with. I've learned a lot through this process and I really appreciate that we're going to have a much more equitable agreement going into the future. So I'd like to thank the county administrator first and foremost, working with him throughout this process. I think we both learned a lot to get to this point today. I'd like to thank his team, Sandy Regallo. I'd like to thank Mo. I'd like to thank Jeffrey. I'd like to thank, ooh, Stanley. I think I almost got everyone and Kristen for not letting anything, any of our things slip through that shouldn't have slipped through. So anyways, thank you all for your support. Thank you again, Jay. I really appreciate you working with us on this and considering this today. And like I said, it's just going to create much more equability and moving into the future for our city and we appreciate it. I'm going to pass it over to the mayor who'd like to say a few things as well. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. How are you guys?
Good, thank you.
Well, I guess I will echo what our city manager, Tony, said, starting with thank you. You know, this has been a long road to get to this point. As you know, we have continued to grow as a city, South County and the county itself. But, you know, there's expectations that our constituents expect from us as far as services and public safety. And your vote today is really going to make that difference. And I really appreciate you guys having faith and putting the faith back into the cities, especially the South County and especially Manteca, that you have faith in our leadership and our staff to make sure that we're going to do the best with the money that you're going to be giving us, hopefully back. So with that, I also want to thank all the staff that worked really hard on this whole ordeal. It's been, it's been a few years in the coming. Actually, it's been a long time in the coming. So thank you to your county staff and also our city staff to work collaboratively together to make this day happen. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thea Wilberding, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Chair Vipadwa, members of the board, and also our contingent from Manteca. It was very pleasant to work with them and challenging at other times. As they mentioned, there was a lot of collaborative effort that went into this. I do have a little five-minute PowerPoint presentation. If you'd like, I can run through.
Yes, please.
And what I'll do is I'll explain some of the processes that we went through because, as I pointed out, it probably took a good year and a half plus because of a lot of evolution of activity that went on during that time. We worked very diligently to try to accommodate the requests that came at us from the City of Manteca. We wanted to understand why they were making them and there was a lot of back and forth that went on and they've been great partners to work with. So I did want to give them a shout out as well. So with that, I'll start, I'll start my little presentation. This is an addendum to the master property tax sharing agreement. So what we have here is we're leaving our existing master agreement intact, which is in force until December 21, 2028. And just a brief review of that is this allocates property tax percentages, 80% to the city, 20% to the county, or 80 to the county, 20 to the city, for base taxes and growth upon annexation. There was back in 2018, a one-off Griffin Park Agreement, and that split taxes 100% to the county for base and 60/40 for the county and the city for growth. And so this does not impact either one of those two. And so what this addendum that we're proposing does is that allocates 90% to the county, 10% to the city for base taxes. And those are taxes for real estate that's already been developed in place and 60% county and 40% city for growth, for new development that happens. And the reason we entered into this is because we believe this more equitably allocates the tax resources. this more equitably allocates the tax resources between the city and county, which is why the city came to us in the first place, pre-development, and related to the annexed areas. Now, some of the things you'll see in here and there will be familiar because we wanted to mirror the terms of the recent agreements that we made with Lathrop and Lowdi. We've actually been through this exercise in iterative form twice already. So our methodology, the analysis was performed by NBS, a municipal financial services provider, and if they sound familiar, it's because we did use them, or Lowdi did use them. And one of the things that we started out with is Manteca did not use NBS. And I sat down with their city manager, explained some of the benefits. They went back out and actually did two sets of analyses in order to make sure that we had good numbers. We also, and I'll mention in a minute, more properties got considered, added, removed, and this thing was an evolving process as we went forward. The property tax revenue for this is based on the assessed value of future development. We're not talking about development that's already occurred. And the cost projections associated with the services that will be encountered because of this development is based on persons served. And as I mentioned in my previous presentations for the other two cities, there's two types of populations. There's residential, the people who live there, who draw more services because they're full-time residents, and then employee populations that come in and out of the city. And essentially, what NBS does is they value that at a fifty percent because people are there half the time. We kind of vetted that out. It's about as good as numbers you're going to get. So we studied one major unincorporated region, which is Lumina. And when Manteca first came to us, that's what they were talking about, Lumina and Machado Park. Then a couple of cities got entered into that were already developed, and then those came out, and then they asked us to start reconsidering other cities, which I'll show you in a minute. And the sensitivity analysis that got performed on Lumina as the template, if you will, was eighty-twenty, county-city, seventy-thirty, sixty-forty, forty-three-fifty-seven, not sure why we had the odd numbers in there, and then forty-sixty in a reverse between the county and the city. So, we had to start with the current population, the current residential population, which at the time was eighty-six thousand in the City of Manteca. The employee population was twenty-one, and the adjusted employee population, which is essentially, the employee population is divided by two, it's added to the residential population to come up with a total, persons served of ninety-seven thousand. We did the same thing for the county. These numbers will probably look familiar because I believe they're similar to the ones we used in Lowdi, with the same format of our seven-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand residents, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand employees, and divide that by two, add it to the seven-eighty-four, and you get nine-fifty-three. So, what that did is it created a relationship between the city's current persons served of ninety-seven and out, ten years out in the development would be a hundred-and-forty, essentially, six thousand. Of that, what was the impact of Lumina? Currently, it's undeveloped. There's no, there's no persons to serve out there, and at full build-out, it'll be roughly twenty-six-hundred people, persons served, based on the calculations I just shared. So what are these services? I've shown this before. These are not all-inclusive, but it's just a reference of what kind of services are retained by the city and what kind of services don't transfer from the county because they're county-only services. And for the city and county, we have animal services, building, parks, law enforcement, which is local law enforcement, library, and public works. And those type of services will shift. The ones that will remain are district attorney, elections, indigitive defense, we have the jail, juvenile hall, sheriff's services, probation, all of the property tax administration that we're talking about here, public assistance, which is mainly around our human services agency, public health, and of course, our regional parks. So those will stay. This is, and it's a bit of an eye chart, but I'm going to, I'll show you what will be relevant in a minute. It's the City of Manteca. And so if you were to take a look at the blue items, and they're scattered around the periphery, let's see if I can, this blue one right here is Lumina. It's the largest one, and it's the one that we used as our template. But if you look, there's a couple others, and these are the ones that we picked up along the negotiation process, which is why this thing kept rolling on for over eighteen months, because we considered the additional properties as well. We used the same implications that we used for Lumina, and this is the same process we did for the other two cities. So that's what we're talking about in terms of its scope. So what we looked at is we looked at the fiscal impact if we were to do the eighty-twenty, which is essentially leaving the master agreement in place. And you can see that on the right column, the positive and negative impact is a pickup to the county of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars and a loss to the city of two-seventy-one. At sixty-forty, you see the positive impact drops to the county of two-eighty-eight, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, and a small loss to the city of a hundred-and-thirty-three. Now, this is what we're recommending, and the reason is, you may ask, well, gee, the county still has a little bit of an advantage on the city. There's a lot of assumptions that are built into the. I'm sorry, the mic went off. Thank you. Looking at Manteca is in the middle, and you have a general fund share of property tax rate areas that are throughout the county. And you'll see, they're just under fourteen percent. They are in the middle of all the cities that we have here. So what we did is we did an analysis of what is in the affected area. If you look, there's thirty-four percent of the H dollar, which goes between county, road, and fire. And after the annexation and the revised tax share, on a sixty-forty split, you'll see that the city gets fourteen percent and the county will get twenty. I'll go back to my last slide. You'll see that fourteen percent is almost exactly what they're getting now on average. So that was a real good cross-check for what we were proposing here today. So, a summary of the tax share percentages is this. The master agreement's still going to remain eighty-twenty for both base and growth, and the addendum is going to be an add-on for the future development of the specific properties that we called out, as well as the future development that I lined out in the map there. And that would be at ninety-ten for the base and for sixty-forty for the growth. And with that, I'll take any questions the board might have.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from the board? I see Supervisor Canepa would like a question.
Mine was just more of a comment to Manteca, because you guys were relentless. I mean, we're in Washington, DC, and Tony and Gary were always beating me up on the daily about tax sharing agreement. So I applaud you and I applaud the county for making it work. I mean, it's, you know, it's obviously, I was at a city before, so I know ninety-ten very well. And so we had some pretty interesting conversations, but I'm glad to see that this is common, that you guys are getting the sixty-forty split. So, appreciate it.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations to Manteca, and, you know, thank you to our CAO, Jay. You know, and this is something, when I was mayor of Tracy at one time, that's something that we fought, and, you know, we looked into, and with the mayors of San Joaquin County. And, you know, we had, San Joaquin County had the worst tax sharing agreement, one of the worst tax sharing agreements in the state. And, you know, what this does also is assist our cities with, you know, economic development, you know, being able to procure businesses, bring businesses within the cities. And, you know, if you look at the cities, the cities is where our economic engine is, you know, the most affluent. What you hear a lot of folks complaining about is our, you know, the city's infrastructure. And this will give our cities more money to help with that infrastructure. And I know when I was mayor, you know, we worked with the county, and, you know, the county wasn't willing to work with the city. So I want to say thank you, Jay, for reaching out to our cities and, you know, being a partner. So again, congratulations, Manteca.
Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. As Supervisor Canepa had pointed out, and we talked over this, you've talked to supervisors, you mentioned this, that we needed this to move forward. I am thrilled that we got here this day. Two years is the speed of government, apparently. You have to go through processing meetings and come to meetings of minds, and there are bumps in the road along the way. But you did exactly what you should do, and I have to applaud that before you went to the CAO, you spoke to the supervisors. I know when you went to the CAO, he questioned, why would you go to the supervisors? Simple. We are in charge, not the CAO. So when you go to the supervisor, you talk about the sentiment, the interest. As Supervisor Rickman points out, this is something we had to do in Tracy. This is something we've done in Lowdi. So you guys saw that there's an opportunity to make a revision, and you talked to the supervisors. We said, yes, let's proceed, and it could only happen through the CAO's office. But we're glad that you came to the supervisors first. So don't let anybody ever question when you go to the supervisors, why you went to the supervisors. So we thank you and appreciate you, and we're glad we got there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And since I'm in charge, Supervisor Patty, given my past role that I had as staff director on Capitol Hill, I can tell you that the amount of time and work that staff puts into something like this, elected officials just don't understand. The hours and the hours and heartburn. Jay, you did a phenomenal job here. Staff, Manteca, it's grueling, it's unthankful, it's horrible, horrible work, but it's for the good of the county and its citizens. I just want to thank you from those in charge. Thank you.
Well, I want to chime in. I know the City of Manteca's been working hard on this for a long time. I know City Manager Lundgren has been talking to all the board members, but I got to take my hat off to our CAO, Jay Wolverdin, who worked extremely hard on this, and this is quite an accomplishment. Congratulations, and I'm so happy that the City of Manteca is happy, and we can all move forward and continue the growth of the City of Manteca, the beautiful city, and we'll love to watch it grow. So, a public comment. I do have to open a public comment. Thank you, Supervisor Patty. At this time, public comment. Anybody would like to come forward and speak on this matter?
Chairman, I'd like to clarify that this is just public.
Just for this discussion, yes. Anyone? I see no one, and I will close the public comment, and I'll bring you back to the board. Is there, someone would like to make a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and in true appreciation for the CAO to bring it to the finish line, so not disregarding the effort that it took, because we could not outside of what we would do, but make a motion to approve. Thank you.
We have a first and a second? We have a vote, please. I mean, go to work. Vote, please.
Yeah, mine's not working again. This worked a lot better in the seventies.
Okay. Okay, the motion, patterns five-zero. Congratulations to the City of Manteca. Thank you. At this time, we're going to recess the board of supervising meetings. We're going to go to closed session, and we'll come back at ten-thirty.
Actually, Chairman, it's still a little early. If you want to do public comments, you can probably do closed session right after.
No problem. We're going to, we're going to go to public comment then. Now is the time for public comment on matters within jurisdiction of the board of supervisors that are not listed on the agenda, and the minutes, consent calendar, and closed session items. We request that you fill out a comment form. If you address the board in person, there's a time limit of three minutes for these comments. There's a device in the podium with the green and our first speaker is Latonya Watkins. If you could address the board, that'd be great.
Robert Rickman's office, I've called him several times. He wouldn't even talk to me. My name's Latonya Watkins. My daughter is Danisha Rowe.
Ma'am, would you address the board, please?
On January fifth.
Will you please address the board?
She was murdered in Tracy on January fifth. Her body was thrown out on the road on Crispin and Durham Ferry Road, and Robert Rickman has his campaign sign right next to where my daughter's body was found. And me and my kids are starving. We can't eat because of these programs that you guys run. You said it, Tom Patty. You said it. We should come to the supervisors. I came to you. I came to all of you. None of you guys cared. And me and my kids are about to be homeless on March first because of these programs. Ron Fetter just knows exactly who I am. I also was a victim of a violent crime. So one of you guys need to tell me how I could have a gun pointed at me and my life threatened. My daughter could be murdered in San Joaquin County, and the programs, the Cal VC, the welfare program, I'm not on welfare. You have nothing for the working poor. I am the working poor. I've lived here for seven years. I contribute. My tax dollars help pay for some of these things that when I need help, nothing can help me. I don't qualify for welfare. So when I called your office, Robert Rickman, you had Scott Terrell to call me back, to refer me to a welfare department that I don't qualify for because of the rules that you guys make. So if I can't eat, then why are you guys here? If I, on March first, me and my kids can, will not be able to pay our rent. I'm about to lose everything I own, my car, everything. And for three weeks, I have been reaching out to the Cal VC, to you personally, Robert Rickman. And you, you, Tom Patty, you smug. You got a smug attitude. You got your signs all around my house, "Time for action." And it's time for action now because me and my kids are starving, and we cannot eat. You think that's, you got a smile on your face? You got a smile on your face that my daughter's body was found on the ground? What is funny? What is funny, Tom Patty? So what are y'all going to do about it? Me and my kids are starving. We're hungry. We need our, I need my lost wages paid. What are y'all going to do about it? That's what I came to ask. Speak! Y'all was taking pictures? Everything was funny when everything, when everybody was being recognized, but I'm one of the actual people you claim to be for. Y'all just want to keep y'all jobs. But I'm a real person. And if I can't eat, why are you sitting there, Rickman? Why? Why you can't talk to me? Huh? Why would you let me and my kids starve? Huh? Why? And you too, you the district I lived in for the gun that was pointed at my face. Paul Campanata, why?
Okay, ma'am, you're three minutes left.
John Fetter just knows exactly who I am. What are y'all going to do? Y'all know the problem today, so what are y'all going to do? I'm not leaving here today until one of y'all tell me what are y'all going to do? Because if y'all can't, if y'all cannot help me, then y'all don't.
Okay, ma'am, time is up. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, anyone else like to speak? Other comment?
I'm leaving. I'm not leaving. I am not leaving. My daughter's body was found on the ground, and me and my kids are starving. We asked for help. I reached out, and he wouldn't even answer my call. He wouldn't even call me back. He had Dr. Wells calling me. I'm a working poor. There's nothing that I can do.
Chairman, I believe that Kevin Basso would also like to have a public comment.
Great.
Okay, our next speaker would be Kevin Basso. Okay, our next speaker would be Kevin Bossow.
Working?
Have any, help with the mic, please?
Hello?
There you go. There you can raise it up a little bit.
Sure. Uh, I am, thank you.
We'll start your time over. We'll start your time over.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Bossow, I am a.
I interrupt just for a second.
Please.
I don't believe this has to do with item thirty.
Different item, different, different topic, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kevin Bossow, I am a lifelong resident of San Joaquin County, the city of Stockton. I have spent the last thirty years of my professional career in the waste recycling and landfill business right here in San Joaquin County. I would like to take this opportunity this morning to talk about the residential collection rates in the unincorporated county, and these unjustified rates charged to our residents. A quick comparison of this rate with the rates in the city of Stockton will quickly paint the picture. Why there are actually four different companies providing residential collection service within seven franchise zones in the county. One company, Republic Services, collects about seventy percent of all the county residential homes. Republic Services, uh, collection area includes the unincorporated pockets of Lincoln Village, Country Club, Marotta, all the way out through Linden, about twenty thousand homes. Conveniently for this presentation, Republic Services is also a franchise collector in the city of Stockton. So what I handed out was a quick sheet that shows the basic rate, uh, typically the thirty, sixty, or ninety gallon rate is the option that the resident gets to choose for trash services. And, and then the rate there is, you've got two, uh, numbers. You've got the, the rate that's provided, or the funds that is provided to Republic Services, and that on the thirty gallon is the three, thirty-three dollars. That's actually the billed amount and the amount Republic receives. In the city of Stockton, you'll see that same amount if you work across to the thirty gallon rate, and it's twenty-seven dollars. That's what Republic receives after the city has taken out the franchise fees. So it's an apples to apples comparison. And you can see there's a pretty large discrepancy in the price, nineteen to forty-five percent. Well, you would think, uh, there must be more services provided in San Joaquin County. Uh, unfortunately, it's quite the opposite. And if you look at the second page, which was a list of services, in the city of Stockton, you get recycling, green waste, and trash picked up weekly at the curb through a large cart. In the county, you have trash weekly, recycling every other week in a small fourteen gallon basket. And if you want green waste, that's every other week, and that's an extra sixteen dollars a month on top of those rates. So why is this so? Very simple, no competitive process in place since nineteen eighty-two. Currently, staff is working with the haulers to extend the collection agreements, yet another time without a competitive process. I urge this board to get involved quickly, request the topic for board consideration, and require a competitive process. The good news is you have time for a full, transparent, competitive process. The franchise agreements run through twenty twenty-five, twenty-two months from now, but this needs to be addressed, addressed quickly, as the process will take time. Let competition ensure our residents provide, or provide a maximum service for the best rate. I urge this board to quickly issue an agenda item, as there is a huge disparity in the rates, and it needs your attention. Thank you for your consideration and allowing me to speak today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak and public comment?
Good morning. Hi, my name's Lauren Daniella, and I'm a resident of San Joaquin County. The truth will set us free. The freedom and sovereignty of the whole community is putting into jeopardy as a series of unlawful planning exercises, scopes of work, and inter-agency agreements with the state and federal agencies have taken away our individual rights and freedoms. Last meeting I watched as misleading information was presented to the inquiries of the board. Hurt immunity in its current formal definition solely depends on having vaccinations given to a threshold amount, not on your sovereign immunity. It no longer requires that they have to have, uh, natural immunity. In addition, as part of our improvement plan, vaccines are a best practice. I think that we need to bring back the improvement plan as accepted, because it's very clear the board does not wish to have its items be put upon its people. There were lots of scopes of work in there that were deemed appropriate, and I think the most glaring evidence that we see is that the board in a public health emergency will not be the authority. Doctor Maggie Park, as the E S eight F eight, will be able to put any countermeasure on me she sees fit. Inhale, uh, patch, injectable, uh, even jail. Your current, uh, ordinance four three seven five is that if I willfully resist taking a countermeasure from the San Joaquin County Police Public Health Officer, I can go to jail and get a five hundred fine. Not to mention, yesterday in Washington, D.C., Senator Ron Johnston held a public meeting, and in that public meeting, global experts conferred upon the abject failure of emergency incidents response. There's glaring hidden data, criminal misconduct, injuries, and authorities of power. As we sit on the eve of the World Health Organization passing legislation that would make us beholden to their succinct, succinctly only one world health initiatives, that would mean that if Tedros says I have to take a vaccine, I can't say no. It also says if Tedros says that if a modeling of your new data-driven, uh, health informatics system says I can't leave my house, I can't. I motion for the board to, uh, put an immediate stop work on the improvement plan as accepted, bring it back as an item. The reason that I'm doing this is there are serious harms that violate the FEMA H S E P guideline, the constitutional amendments, and it puts great liability and risk on the entire community. The current form of the A R fails to show that there was harm done. The same bias that Senator Ron Johnston said in his reporting was found in our reporting. Third, there has been no quantitative value as to how much it's going to cost the citizens of our county on a whole. That was a requirement provided by Mr. Dietrich, that he would tell us how much all this would cost. Lastly, concealing information from authoritative legislative bodies defrauds the people of our Brown Act rights, and you should be able to know what your rights are in your reporting. So if I could, I motioned, I know you can't respond to the motion, but I'm asking for a motion. Yeah, the, the, it's beeping. Yeah, so I made a mo, an immediate motion, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else like to speak or public comment?
Good morning. Chairman Via Pura, Board of Supervisors, and members of the board. My name is Melanie Knott. I'm a concerned citizen of San Joaquin County. San Joaquin County is in the thick of their primary presidential election season. Despite the media messages of the county taking security measures to bring about voter confidence from the sheer con-election fraud case, unfortunately, election fraud still plagues our county elections. We're not alone. Counties across our nation continue fighting in courts for the truth to come out. Our sheriff's office shared that the con-election fraud case was brought to their attention for investigation by a, a group of local concerned citizens. The case highlighted the vulnerabilities of signature verification, online voter registration, and voter intimidation. The con-election fraud case is court-tested proof of fraud. It demonstrates methods that could be used anywhere, even from foreign locations. I realize that the R O V office worked diligently alongside the sheriff's office in this election fraud case, but it's important to note that the eyes and ears of local concerned citizens caught this election fraud, which brought about a resolution. The R O V office missed, did not catch the election fraud, even with security protocols in place. Yet I've shared with this board before how widespread the fraud goes, how it's subtle, difficult to detect, and very effective at changing the outcome of an election. But again, these are things you already know. The San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors, you. You have a jurisdiction to act to restore accountability, integrity, transparency, and trust in our elections. I'll begin to close with the same quotes. You can't change what you refuse to confront. Our founding father said, "It is the duty of all nations, or peoples." I look around and I charge you, me, all of us together, to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will of justice and righteousness, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly implore, even appeal, His protection and favor, I believe even His wisdom, His counsel, His help to restore trust in our San Joaquin County elections. Together, we can do this, we must. Lastly, voters of San Joaquin County, educate yourself about the policies and the candidates, and get out there and vote in person at your local precinct. Thank you, and have a great day, God bless you all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak, public comment? Okay, I see none, I'm gonna close the pub, close the comment. We'll bring you back for the minutes of February sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Anyone would like to make an amendment or a.
Motion to approve, barring any changes.
We have a first and a second, we have a vote please? And a motion, patterns five zero. Uh, county council, how are we doing on time?
Yeah, we can go in closed session now, I think we're ready.
Okay, we're gonna take a, uh, probably a thirty-minute recess for a closed session. We'll resume at ten forty-five or so. You'd like to make an announcement, go into the closed session?
I anticipate there will be an announcement.
Okay, great, we'll see you guys at ten forty-five, thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. County Councilor Drennan, you're going to report out of a closed session.
I do. With respect to litigation, Cisneros versus Laura, the board approved by five to zero a vote to settle that case. Supervisor Patty made the motion. Supervisor Kenapa seconded it. The terms and conditions of that settlement will be available upon request once all parties have signed off on the settlement. With respect to Elhundra versus a county, there was a motion made by Supervisor Kenapa, seconded by Supervisor Rickman, and the board approved by a vote of five to zero to settle that case. Again, the terms and conditions of that settlement will be available upon request once all parties have signed off on it. And then finally, with regard to Inray Endo International, which is a bankruptcy case, the board approved the the terms of that bankruptcy settlement retroactively. That was a five to zero vote initiated or the motion made by Supervisor Kenapa and seconded by Chairman Vipura. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing. With regard to the Gina, with regard to the property negotiations, the board gave instructions to the property negotiators, and they'll be carrying out those instructions. That's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to consent calendar. Starting with Supervisor Patty, he has pulled number thirteen, number fourteen, number fifteen, number eighteen, number nineteen, number twenty-two, and number thirty. So we'll start it from our right. Supervisor Jing, would you like to pull anything other than those numbers?
Is there anything left?
I know. He pulled thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two.
Picking the remaining one square on the Super Bowl board. No. Yeah, thirty was the only thing I wanted to.
Supervisor Patty, oh, we can't put.
I'm fine, thank you.
Supervisor Rippon? Okay, we're going to start with, let's start with item number thirty, go backwards. Number thirty is, hold on, here with me, please. Public Works, approval of the agreement for the third extension of Agreement A dash zero six dash one zero six with Foothill Sanitary Landfill Incorporated for operations of the Foothill Sanctuary Landfill. Fourth District. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to bring this forward. I know that we've had some comments in public public comment as well, and Public Works has been working on this to bring back to the board what would be an interim agreement of extension, not just the normal six-year extension that has come in for approximately the last forty-plus years. Is that correct? For our landfill operation, we've had a thirty or forty year, just, we just kept renewing?
Good morning. First Buckman with your Public Works Department. The current agreement with Foothill Inc. has been in place for about eighteen years.
Eighteen. Okay, got it. So we've got a call from different people, and I appreciate staff working on this to bring back to the board an amended process. So I believe the board will be favorable towards what's being presented. Reading over through the agreement, though, I did have one suggestion to make is that, put a note here, currently we have a one-year termination from the date of notice. I would suggest the board consider a six-month termination from date of notice. That's after we've done the RFP, and we've decided that there's going to be, if there's going to be any change at all. So instead of a one-year extension, a termination, I would recommend that we bring that down to six months. And then while we're on the discussion of these RFPs, we've got some information here on collection. So on a side note, I'd like to see the county bring back to us the process and move this forward, an RFP for the collection side. So that this isn't six months, eight months, ten months from now, but within the next board meeting, one or two meetings, we're approving an RFP process for collection so that it would give, if there's any change, ample time for a transition in the future, near future, as that contract's up for renewal on the horizon. So Chairman, that's kind of where I was at, just reading over what's being presented. I have that one slight amendment for the six-month instead of one-year from date of notice.
Patty, Supervisor Jing.
Thank you. So I'm glad to see this pulled from the agenda. I'm glad the subject, you know, came up. You know, perception is reality, and, you know, there's a perception in this. And, you know, there's a perception in this county. You know, it goes back to the good old boys' network and special favors and family and friends and so forth. So this is why I thought this was a great issue, because it seems like everybody in the garbage community is family and friends. So it's family against family. It's great. We get to make a decision based on good policy. I was recently trying to put a, you know, a clinic in Lodi, which I've never talked about, you know, up here. But I was chastised because it wasn't put out to bid. And here, you know, we've got longstanding practices of putting things out, not putting them out to bid. We're renegotiating because we don't understand how difficult, you know, this process can be. At the end of the day, staff can make a recommendation to stick with an existing company and explain, you know, why. And we might save a little money, but this is what goes with it. And then we can make that decision. You'd be very well right. But I think everything from this landfill project to collections, they need to be put out to bid. You know, it's, I don't know how many of you have had the same car insurance carrier for thirty years, but if you have, I'd suggest you go get another quote, because it just continues to go up if you don't, you know, check your bids. So on the, this specific item is the landfill, correct? I would like some follow-up on how we're doing the rest of, you know, the garbage collection. I just recently was given an example of, you know, on Ben Holt, you know, the difference between garbage rates depending on what side of the street you're on. You know, for me, not my forte, that was eye-opening. And, you know, I'd like to see a little, you know, talk about that a little bit more. And I'd like to see these all go out to bid. On the landfill, that needs to go out to bid. So, and an RFP sooner rather than later, because it's, you know, to get that started, it needs to be started immediately. So I don't know if that's kind of your thinking too, Supervisor Patty, on the issue of this? Because it is the landfill we just pulled.
Through the chair, correct. We are talking landfill, and so I may have a slight suggestion and adjustment. And then, yes, we do proceed with the RFP, not six, eight, ten months from now, but we move this forward concurrent with, I believe, collection, as you're pointing up. But I'd be up to staff to bring this back to the board, judging the sentiment of the rest of us. I'm one, you've got another speaking out. Thank you.
Okay, this time, anyone else like to speak? Supervisor Canepa.
Yes, so I'm learning a lot about garbage and what one area does and one area doesn't do. And I think it needs to be clarified. I mean, you know, with franchise fees at the city where I came from, and then, you know, pickup and why it's more expensive. But I mean, this impacts the cost, right? Because what this is, is the push fee, and then that's charged to the people that pick up the trash to go dump it there, correct? So I mean, that's the case in point. So theoretically, if you do save money here, it saves money for the consumer in the end. Can you answer that or speak to that? About what, I mean, for somebody watching, they don't understand what we're talking about. I mean, just like I didn't understand what tippage fee and all that stuff was. So I mean, they are commingled, I mean, kind of, sort of, in a way. So if you could kind of explain what this is and what the background is, I think it would be good for people watching that have no clue what we're doing.
Through the chair, if I could just touch on some brief background on this contract that's before the board first. The board did, as we mentioned previously, award the contract eighteen years ago for a six-year term. And the agreement contemplated up to three six-year extensions. The board has already approved two extensions in consideration of the final six-year extension as what's before your board today. The way the agreement is worded, the board really has two options when considering the extension. Approving a six-year extension or face an abrupt termination that would undoubtedly result in an undesirable break in service. While we're comfortable recommending an unqualified six-year extension because our current vendor is performing well and we enjoy the second lowest operating cost per ton out of the twenty-one landfills operating in Northern California, we wanted to provide the board another option for moving forward. And that's why we proposed the early termination language that's before you that allows us, before the end of the six-year extension, to conduct a competitive selection process and then terminate the contract if the board opts to go with another vendor. Depending on the board's direction, we could initiate that process tomorrow, if that's the direction we get today. To Supervisor Patty's comment, the reason for the one-year extension is twofold, really. First, the early termination language, if the contractor terminates, requires a one-year notification period as well. So we thought it was fair to have the same notification period if the county chooses to terminate early. The second reason is to allow for a responsible transition between vendor, vendors. It's a pretty complicated process. There are a lot of regulatory and environmental considerations. Also, I understand that the contractor uses union labor, which requires some notification and some time to wind that down. So that's the reason for the one-year proposal. But if the board directs a shorter time period, that's something we'd have to negotiate with the vendor. He's agreed to the one-year as it stands today.
So then part of that would be if we do go going forward. Obviously, we need open and transparent government. I think that's the most important part. The second part is saving the people money, which needs to be, you know what I mean, looked at pretty heavily. Because if you're talking about the, what's the AB thirteen?
SB thirteen eighty-three, right.
Yeah, so all the requirements that are coming with that forward, and then negotiating with the garbage haulers. It is kind of commingled. I know it's not supposed to be, but I mean...
Right.
So what's the best practice of going forward with the RFP and the length and, you know what I mean? Because obviously...
To address the next part of your question regarding the franchise contracts, those are expiring in about two years. We're in the process of, right now, of renegotiating contracts, of hauler contracts with each of the four residential haulers. The state has been pushing us to get revised hauler contracts that meet the SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. But given the comments today with the chair's concurrence, we can bring back a discussion item to the board for you to give us a direction on whether we go out for competitive selection or move ahead with an extension that amends the current contracts. Because there are some trade-offs involved there regarding state's response for our compliance efforts with SB thirteen eighty-three. We're not sure exactly how they would respond to such a delay. So there's some pros and cons that probably need to be weighed, and we were happy to bring a discussion item back to the board so we can get the board's direction on that.
One of the other questions to finish up with is there's, obviously, we, at the city, we had a garbage consultant that came in, and kind of, I know we don't, a lot of people don't like, but for specialties, I think that's important. And I mean, to look at it, because there is disparity. I mean, if you look at these, you know what I mean? I came from washing cars, and if you look at some of these numbers, they don't look great. So I mean, you know...
Well, I will just respond at this point. We're happy to provide detailed information on the differences between us and the city, for example, and the, you know, people with vastly different rates when they're right across the street. But, and as a very brief answer, I will tell you that because of the lower densities in the county, the cost of providing the service is fundamentally different than the cost of providing in the city. It's typically more expensive, just like transit in areas with lower density.
Taxpayer who sees the same Republic truck across the street?
Right.
It's hard to choke down. I mean, so...
No, understood. It's another of those issues caused by the unincorporated islands. I agree.
Okay. Of which my district has a lot of, so, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I see no other requests for speaking, so I'm gonna open the public comment. I do have two speakers, so public comment is now open. Kevin Bosso, please come forward.
Kevin Bosso, back up. I'm here today to request that the Foothill operation agreement goes out to a competitive bid, as you all have been discussing. As the staff report indicates, it's been some time since it's...
Excuse me, Mr. Bosso. Can we have somebody raise the mic for him, please?
Yeah, I think it's figured. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the staff report indicate, it's been some time since there's been a competitive bid. There are a number of qualified operators here today all looking for an opportunity to provide the county competitive rates. Let competition drive service and rates. While the contract extension in front of you allows for the county for early termination to move forward on an RFP, it does not require it, nor does it have a timeframe. I do agree with Supervisor Patty's comments that termination, early termination, should be done in six months. A RFP process should take four to six months. And then if you choose to go with a new vendor, a six-month termination is allowable enough lead time. I urge this board to move quickly on the RFP. Cost savings are available now to the citizens of our county. I spoke earlier in public comments that the residential franchise collection system needs this board's attention. Certainly, a competitive process within the residential system is warranted. And the only way, the only way to ensure all county households have the maximum service for the best rates is through competition. Also important to understand that savings related to the Foothill operation agreement will affect the rates that our county's residents pay for residential collection services as the haulers are required, contractually obligated, to take that waste that they collect in the residential system into the county system. Any savings from an RFP process can be passed directly to our county residents. And that's on the RFP process as of the Foothill agreement. Of course, I'm a proponent of going out on the residential systems, too, for an RFP process. Thank you for your consideration. And the residents of San Joaquin County will applaud this board's transparency and your hard-fought efforts to reduce the rates caused or charged to the consumer. I'm certainly available now or in the future to discuss further on this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nabil Zumont.
Chairman, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You kind of already touched on my concerns. I read last week, I live in San Joaquin County off of Country Club area. So across the street, where there is a sidewalk, there's a public services picking up the same garbage at a higher rate, at a lower rate than what I pay just across the street. But there was an article in the 209 Times last week that talked about this tale of two trash cans and how the county residents are paying a lot more. And I was honestly shocked to hear about that. I do not know why it's happening. The article mentioned that there has been an ongoing lack of competition when it comes to the landfill contract and maybe the hauler's contract. Public Works mentioned that they have their reasons why the county and less density, and it will cost more. But from the public's perspective, we have no idea why this is happening. It just does not sit well. And I think you kind of mentioned that. It's hard to kind of understand why it happens. So I would ask the board to make sure it doesn't happen or figure out why it's happening. And if there is a justifiable reason for why it's happening, to let the public know. So it's not an issue that we read about in the paper and realize, you know, why fifty percent more that we're paying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mike Lean. I'm with LND Landfill in Sacramento. And my family has owned and operated LND since nineteen seventy-six. We bury something on the order of a thousand to fifteen hundred tons a day. We recycle another five hundred tons a day. And we're interested in looking at and pursuing this contract if it were to become available. I'd be pleased to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't see any. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment on this item? Say your name, please.
My name is Rudy Vacarezza. My family owns and operates Cal Waste. We're based out of, we've been based out of San Joaquin County. We service residential, commercial, and industrial waste in the county since the early twenties. We are also a qualified landfill operator. We're, I'm a lifetime resident of San Joaquin County. And just like Mike, we would be interested in pursuing this contract if it were to go out to bid. And we would want to submit the most competitive bid available or possible for the residents. And we see this as a good thing for the system as a whole. We're one of the, we utilize the landfill system in San Joaquin County. And we just would like to take the opportunity to help the county residents out as well, so...
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment? I see none. I'm gonna close by the comment, bring it back to the board. Any other comments from any supervisors? Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chairman. It's a little clarity from our Public Works Director. We had negotiated a one-year out with the, for an extension, however that may be. And of course, if we go back out to bid, our current service provider has the opportunity to bid, re-submit a bid. That would then change the agreement we have with them currently, correct?
Yeah, whether we would amend the contract or do a new contract, that's yet to be determined. But yes, our current vendor could certainly participate in the competitive selection process.
Understood. So let's say, for instance, they were to win the bid because they were lower, but we've got a one-year out, and we're paying a higher bid for that one year.
No, the one-year, the one-year period is only the waiting, notification period for an early termination. Oh, I see what you're saying. If we did a new contract.
Right. So my thought is that we go forward with, we've got an extension, but bring back to, if you need to come back to the board, but we issue a termination. That gives a one-year window to put out an RFP, which will take several months, five, six months to approve something. Six-months window for a transition period, if there is any, from a new vendor or not. And then we, within a year or so, basically, we're looking at operating with a new agreement, which fits the spirit of what Supervisor Canepa and Supervisor Ding, and I believe, you know, all of us here want to make sure that we're doing, we're serving the citizens of San Joaquin County to the best capacity possible and consider it for the rates that they might be paying for this. And then you've also heard from the board to proceed and bring back to the board the discussion on RFP for collection.
Correct. In terms of doing a termination now, that would result in a break in service. If the board does not approve an extension today, the way the contract's worded is it would terminate as of April second. We don't have anybody waiting in the wings to continue providing that service. It's kind of a weird way that agreement was structured. It almost paints the board into a corner. That's why we provided the extra early termination option. And my only concern with the six-month notification period instead of the one-year is that we don't know if our vendor's gonna agree to that at this point. We can, if we recess this item for a few minutes, and he's not here, and we can try to get a hold of him and see if he would agree to the six months, we're happy to try to, you know, see if he is agreeable to that. But the way it would work currently, if the board says today, we want you to start a selection process tomorrow, we'll go through that, go through as quickly as we can. It is a fairly complicated RFP to put together, but we will get that done. I think four to six months, as Mr. Bosso indicated, is probably a bit aggressive, but we'll do it as quickly as we can. We go through the selection process. I think, you know, it'd be the better part of a year before we got back to the board. And if the board elects to go to another vendor, then we would notify, you know, the current vendor, give him the six-month notice, and then begin the transition. Or the one-year notice, whatever we agree to.
Understood. So it sounds like it would be going about a year as it is. If we're, you're saying it's aggressive to get this accomplished in the next four to six months?
Yeah, the sequence of events would be, we initiate the selection process, and then we can, you know, we come back with the recommendations to the board, and the notification... the notification process only comes back if we recommend and the board agrees to utilize another vendor. If we continue with the same vendor, we, we have different options. We could amend the current contract, go with a new one, and, and we don't necessarily need a notification period. Notification period is intended for the vendor to be able to wind down his operations, and as I mentioned before, to provide for a responsible transition between vendors.
Okay. The indication that I'm understanding is that a transition of about six months could be accomplished. So, and I understand the concerns you have.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll bring it to the board, the pleasure of the board here and through the chair, if that, if we want you to maybe take a recess and go check with the vendor and, and affirm if a six months out, which is about six months from now, that sounds like that might happen. So you're looking at a full year before there's going to be any, any change at, at best, it sounds like.
Full disclosure, I, I think we're looking at something north of a year. I think going, developing the RFP, going through a selection process, getting back for a recommendation to the board, I think that's going to be at least nine months. It may be pushing a year. And then there would be whatever notification period, you know, the board asks for, and the vendor agrees to, you know, after that, until we had a new vendor in place.
All right, so then, through the chair and finishing up, I think six months then. If we're looking at 10 months, I'll be off the board in 10, 10 and a half months. So I think this should come back, and we, you know, six months after that, that's fine, because then you're looking over a year to a year and a half of service, close to it. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Ding.
Let me see if I can structure this a little simpler if we're on the same timeline and Fritz and County Council. If you agree, is we put this out to bid with a bid to come back in one year. If the current holder of the contract is not the bidder, or not the winner of the bid, he gets six months to wind down. So in other words, everybody, we put it out to bid right now, year, hear the bids. If the current holder of the contract is not chosen, then he gets an extension of six months to close it down. Can we do that?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
My, my only concern with that, Chair, is that we're not positive that the vendor will agree to that six-month period as opposed to the 12-month period that's currently in the contract.
Well, would you like a recess of maybe 15 minutes? We finish the consent calendar, you make some phone calls and come back?
We're happy to do that.
Okay, well, we have about 15, 20 more minutes of consent. I will, we'll call you back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving on to item number 21, and we'll recess that motion here. Item number 21 is that District Attorney retroactively adopt the resolution to contract with California Office of Emergency Services for the unserved, under-sterved victim advocacy outreach program in the amount of $246,133 for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. DA Freitas.
To, because they're pretty incredible. I know you have a very large consent agenda, and you have many different items on it, but let me highlight a couple of the very important parts of the 21 and 22. Both of these are competitive grants, so that means that we have to apply through the CAL ES Voca Program for, 21 serves our victim witness, and 22 serves our Family Justice Center. In both of these applications, I have amazing grant writers, and we were able to max out the maximum amount of funds that were allowable for both of these grants. So we were able to get every single penny for our constituents that would be used to serve our victims. This amount of money is huge because in 2023, the number we served in both the Family Justice Center and Victim Witness Advocates as Victim Witnesses in the Victim Witness Unit was record numbers for that amount. So Victim Witnesses served over 12,600 victims in San Joaquin County, and the Family Justice Center served 2,754 victims, both of them record amounts for the District Attorney's Office. This, one grant for Victim Witness alone in 21 was responsible for providing service to over 2,500 victims. This pays for amazing things. It pays for salaries for victims, overtime. And here to talk about the specifics of this is our Director from the Family Justice Center, Alexis Wilber, who's doing an amazing job and, and can explain this far much better than I can. So if I could turn it over to her?
Good morning, Chairman Villapudra and Vice Chair Canepa. Thank you, District Attorney Freitas, and thank you for pulling this consent item, Mr. Patty. Through the XC Grant, we've received this grant now for the sixth year, and it is a competitive OES. It pays for multiple staff programs, and then it also pays for our overtime so we can have crisis intervention as well as our classes that we have for our survivors to kind of help build prosocially. In 2023, we saw an overall 15% increase in clients who walk through our doors. That's not services, that's just individual clients. Most of the time, on average, we provide eight to 10 services per victim, so a 15% increase just in clients alone. We also, in 2023, added six new partners, and we're now at 19 partners that are working in conjunction. The beauty of what the Family Justice Center is, is it encourages collaboration, and it encourages well-existing programs within the county to work together, and we hope to continue to do that far in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Warren couldn't be here today to talk about the Victim Witness portion of it, but through this program, we're able to spread funds all across the county. This allows us to have a victim referral process at several of our law enforcement agencies. Those include Ripon, Escalon PD, Tracy Police Department, the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Office, and the Lathua Police Department. So without these funds, we would be hard-pressed to provide many of the amazing services we do. Both of these organizations are award-winning and deservingly so. So we urge your support and consent vote on this item.
I appreciate it. Anyone like to comment on this item? Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chairman. The reason why I wanted to pull that is oftentimes we see in our county a lot of challenges, but what's oftentimes overlooked is the services and the outreach and the engagement we have with those that are victims, whether they be witnesses or they need services. And knowing that these are competitive grants, I wanted, through the chair, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention and to the public's attention, so they understand that, you know, how engaged we are in the services, the compassion, the outreach, every element that our, emanating from our DA's office, staff, the actions you all take. We really, truly appreciate it, and that's why I had pulled these today. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Canepa?
I just want to thank what you guys do. I mean, obviously, we can't engage with the woman that was up here earlier, but a lot of the services that you provide would be perfect for her. I mean, the resource, I mean, we had Bread of Life here. There's tons of resources, but it's a matter of connecting the people with the resources, and I think we need to do a better job at that because obviously she came here and felt that we weren't servicing her. But I mean, the things that you do and the grant dollars like this actually get out into the community. So I mean, if we could do some, I saw Genevieve reach out to the lady that was here speaking at, but there are services and to be in contact with, so I applaud what you guys do. Obviously, we need to do some outreach and help that lady that was here earlier. I would appreciate that if you could at least abridge that gap, so there's some trust. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I see none. I want to say thank you because the resources you guys provide help so many people, and I know Lex is here all heart, you give 100% and Ron, you're behind it, and your staff is amazing, so great job doing it, guys.
And I thank all of you for recognizing this. This is a small part, this over half million dollars is a small part of the over $10 million that we receive and fight for annually for grants, which you know our budget is about 60 million, so one-sixth of our budget comes from grants, and that's grants that we fight for every single year. And I applaud these amazing directors for the hard work that they do, and then putting it, I, I couldn't write a grant if my life depended on it, but I, I have amazing people that do write these great grants. Also, we invite you to always come take a tour of our Family Justice Center. I know many of you have, but we also have our annual report that should be available shortly, and my understanding is the 501(c)(3), my Family Justice Board Foundation, they may have something in the works, I'm sure. There'll be more information about that. Also, we're getting ready to have our Victim Rights Week, which is the last week in April, and we will have our luncheon again. We'll be sending invitations for that, and I, off the top of my head, I believe it's April 26th, so we'd love to have you all.
Thank you very much.
Very good. So thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day. Okay, moving on to item number 13, 14, and 15. Start off with number 13, Behavioral Health, approve First Amendment of Agreement A-22-169 with the Allied Universal Security Services figure increasing by 1.9 million, 3,227 for a total of $6 million, 92,124. Mr. Dugra, good morning.
Good. Chairman, thank you. I wanted to pull this item and just ask through Purchasing and our CAO and Director Dietrich, I know we've talked about this before, but what are we doing? You know, we've got this company, Allied Universal, which is, I believe, an out-of-state corporation versus local vendors, and I just really question if we're allowing and scoring, you know, you've got basically the same services. One company's local with local employees, the other company's corporate and national with, of course, local employees. I would encourage us, as these go forward, and again, through, through the chair, to our CAO, working with our purchasing department, we need to be giving consideration for local vendors, and I'm just curious if that process was robust.
So Supervisor Patty, through the chair, I've been encouraging Behavioral Health to move away from Allied because of some history. There is a newer RFP through purchasing, so our need right now is we've expanded the number of posts and the number of hours, but our goal is to increase the PO, but over the next six months, transition to another vendor.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, and I just appreciate any consideration for a proper scare. We want apples for apples, but giving consideration for local vendors that might excel at providing local services.
And I don't know if Purchasing is here, but I understand that they did another RFP, so there is a roster of, I think, at least three vendors that we can pick from, and I know various county departments use a variety of these vendors.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. And while, while you're there, Behavioral Health, I did want to tout and have you give us a little recap on items number 14 and 15, some of the services that are being done and accomplished, the, the clients that you're taking care of here in the county. Just again, one of these great examples of leadership and the support that Behavioral Health offers throughout the entire county.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty, for pulling these items and allowing us to highlight some of the work we are doing. So 14 and 15 is the expansion of our psychiatry services, specifically for med support services. We use locum contract doctors to help support the work that we do with our county employee doctors. The locums allow us to provide additional support for correctional health, the general hospital, consults for the health clinics, sometimes consults for public health and a variety of other entities, so it allows us to have a whole breadth of psychiatry consults in addition to the services that we do directly provide, which is incredibly beneficial long-term for the work that we do. We also require to have a certain statistical ratio for psychiatry based off of the Medi-Cal beneficiary process. So we currently have, in terms of full-time BHS psychiatrists, 11 full-time, three part-time, as well as the locums that are supporting, and we are required to have a minimum of 23 at any given point. So we are allowed to have that different expansion. We are actively recruiting for addiction medicine, so if you know any psychiatrists that do addiction medicine, please send them that way. We always need the additional help and support. In terms of the ConRep agreement, we have the second-largest ConRep program in the state, second to Los Angeles County, which I think is an amazing feat for our county. What that means is that we have a direct contract with the Department of State Hospitals where we provide intensive, highest-level safety and mental health support for those that would normally be referred to state hospital due to mental illness. And so our team has actually already, this fiscal year, had a thousand-time higher referral for our assessment process, specifically in terms of our ConRep program. And so this contract with the state allows us to expand our caseload and our ability to even do additional field-based work for the most vulnerable that would typically be going to a state hospital.
And I would just add, we, we've had this contract since 1998, and if we didn't directly contract with Department of State Hospitals, they would have another vendor, and I think we have a, a lot of integration and opportunities. These would be consumers in our community anyways, and having them integrated with Behavioral Health, I think, has a lot of value versus a ConRep having a, Department of State Hospitals having a, a non-county-specific contract.
And luckily with our ConRep program, we have a wonderful collaboration with UOP, who works directly on the behavioral modification and the competency for these individuals. So it is a beautiful opportunity for local university as well as Behavioral Health for this program.
And do you have a rough idea of how many clients and individuals we are giving services to in the county annually?
I can absolutely give you that information. So our adult system of care currently, as of today, has opened 6,187 repeat outpatient programs. Our children's system of care has 1,879 youth. In our justice programming, we have 847 individuals with a specific 47 for our ConRep program. Our SUD Services has 1,263, and our mobile crisis team reached out to 1,103 unique individuals last fiscal year, and our crisis, just 24-hour services, served over 4,000 individuals throughout last fiscal year.
Amazing. You have that statistic right in front of you, you have that information to share, and really, just to exemplify the dedication that you have, the entire staff, Director Dietrich, there's a myriad of challenges throughout, but you have both been very steady and very dedicated to this county and, and the needs for some of the individuals. So thank you very much, and Chairman, I wanted to bring this out so that we could, again, share with the public the efforts that are underway on a consistent basis, and great job. Thank you again.
Wonderful. Great job, you guys. Thank you for the presentation. Moving on to item number 18, Neighborhood Preservation, authorize authorization to submit grant application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program in the amount of $1,123,219 for the 2023 allocation year and approve the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Plan Amendment. Mr. Dugra.
Supervisor Patty, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd like Director Dietrich to give a, a highlight again to the public. We've got an ongoing homeless issue that's very challenging, and there's some grant funding that comes along, and some of the use of funds. Perhaps you could share how this money is utilized and what's on the horizon?
So this is a little bit of a retroactive adjustment. In the summer of 2022, prior Community Development Director David Quong, Neighborhood Preservation used to be under them until December that year, he submitted the very initial public, pardon me, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant Funds, and 100% of the activities were for item six, and we had earmarked that to be some street outreach with Whole Person Care and others, but Whole Person Care did not need that because they had CalAim and some other supplemental grant fundings. So this desire is to move some into item number one, which allows us to do more permanent supportive housing. To date, we've expanded year one, that was, I think some of you were at the groundbreaking for Sonora Square. So there was 497,000 applied to Sonora Square for our 2019 plow year, and then 747,000 for the Haven of Peace for 12 additional beds, and they're supporting children and women's program. And for 2022, or pardon me, 2020 year, we've allocated 500,000 to Park Center. That's going to be a permanent supportive housing for Behavioral Health consumers. So this allows us flexibility to not only support permanent supportive housing, but also continue to support street outreach and needs potentially of our navigation centers, if you will. Ultimately, there has been some dialogue, I believe some of the members of the Board of Supervisors also said on SJCOG. SJCOG has gone through a process to look at standing up a regional housing trust. They're looking at the permanent local housing allocation dollars to help provide funds to that trust to kind of fill gaps for hopefully shovel-ready projects that need a little bit extra money to get them across the, the funding finish line, if you will. A lot of engagement there. I, I think SJCOG is going to make a recommendation. I'm hoping that they can form the Regional Housing Trust with up to, I believe, seven municipal partners, which will allow them to leverage permanent local housing allocation dollars, not only in the state, but local housing allocation dollars, not only in the state, but cities get this as well. It's basically a, um, a filing fee for residential, um, uh, escrows, if you will. Uh, but with seven municipal partners, uh, Pla could be used as a local match for state funds. So, uh, the goal of Pla is, is housing, uh, at the, at the end of the day, but there are other, uh, activities that we can do, uh, with some of the funding to support our shelter operations and get people into housing.
Thank you. And so, I noticed that we've got, uh, the, the plan to amend and prioritize to, and spend the expected P L H A funds, which total approximately 7.8 million on eligible housing projects, et cetera. With the state budgetary concerns, is any of this at risk? Are we going, are we starting something that we may have to pull back on, or does this look as though we've got a structure that we, we could recount on?
It should be permanent, but, you know, any act of the legislature could alter this. Uh, back in 20, I think, at SB 2, um, basically every time you do, uh, you, you sell your house, or it's a residential real estate transaction, there's a $70 filing fee that fills these coffers and then goes back to the jurisdiction where that real estate transaction. So, unless the legislature, uh, wants to eye this money and take it back to the state, it, it should be, uh, solid, and you see the dollars flowing in, in the, the mid 1.5 million per year for our jurisdiction.
Okay, and lastly, is the utilization of any of these funds, is it discretionary, or is it earmarked it has to work in, uh, proportion to, uh, certain utility?
Uh, there are six eligible activities. We're looking to allocate, uh, monies just into two of those, and those are to support, uh, the operations of navigation centers and, and non-congregate shelters, as well as I just described, uh, permanent supportive housing allocation, and that's kind of what we've done to date, uh, two county-based projects, Sonora Square and Park Center, as well as Haven of Peace. But this is not eligible just for county. It could be, uh, any developer that needs funds, uh, that is going to be for low-income housing, uh, 50% or lower of area meeting income. However, uh, those units that are funded by this, uh, have to follow the housing-first principle.
Understood. And then finally, uh, my last question for you is, when you talk about navigation centers, we have basically every major city in the county are opening up navigation centers with their shelters. Are they included in this? Do they have to make an application for use of funds, um, to consider their ongoing expenses when dealing with the un-sheltered population that comes in there, or for navigation?
Definitely want to work with our, our shelters, especially the shelters that the county helps support stand up, so that, that some portion of these funds can fill some of those, uh, operating gaps, yes.
All right. Will you be reaching out to them and letting them know that?
We definitely will. We kind of have, I wouldn't say a supernova, but there are several county and C O C funds, specifically, uh, H hap funds that, that, uh, I, I need to either reallocate or, or make sure that they're used in a timely fashion, which means, um, shovel-ready projects versus earmarks that people hold on to.
Excellent. Thank you. Keep up the great work. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, I just had a couple of questions. So, I mean, obviously, Dave Madera from Gospel, I mean, they're trying to do, and, and Chinu Mehdi, they're, they're taking over a lot of these apartments that need help. Are we reaching out to those folks? I mean, because everyone's always looking for this money, and we're always looking for new beds, but we also need to make sure that the beds that we have are habitable and, you know, kept up to a certain standard, and I think that's what we're finding, is a lot of these places, you know, through just being old and wear and tear, um, the landlord can't afford to redo them. So, I think it's important that we do outreach so that these folks know, because I just met with Dave and then Chinu, we just helped her get money from Health Plan, and they're looking at another, at another unit. So, I think it's important to keep those ones that we do have for affordable housing affordable and available, so.
And I have a lot of good connections, and I spoke with David Madera just last week.
Okay.
19, I believe that's you, Supervisor, and, um, I believe that's you. Oh, Public Health, okay, funding the amount of $2,000 to fund a youth cannabis, youth prevention program campaign.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Vila Pudo, I have Renaissance Area Public Health Services Director and Daniel Kim, our Program Coordinator for, uh, Public Health Education, and they have a, a brief, uh, PowerPoint, uh, in follow-up to the discussion we had, uh, about six weeks ago on how we can, uh, tailor messaging, uh, towards, uh, cannabis, uh, and youth.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Chairman Vila Pudo, members of the board, and C O Wilberding. Uh, thank you Supervisor Patty for pulling this item. Uh, at the request of the board, Public Health Services is presenting an initial funding, uh, proposal for a new program to address the need for innovative education campaign to prevent cannabis use among youth and to promote awareness, especially, uh, related to its detrimental impacts on the development, developing brain at that age. Uh, I'd also like to recognize the page staff that helped to, uh, develop this program, Caitlin Pierce, Rachel Zerbo, Deepa Singh, uh, Jessica Freeman, and Sterling Hill. Uh, just some background information to provide some context for this proposal. So, what is the purpose of this program? Simply put, is to prevent cannabis use among youth in San Joaquin County. Uh, there's growing body evidence that cannabis use is harmful to youth mental health. Uh, studies have found that regular cannabis use can increase anxiety, depression, and suicidal thoughts. Uh, this could sound counterintuitive to what we've seen and heard in popular, popular culture about cannabis use. It helps one to relax, that one feels mellow, or that it relieves stress or anxiety for a short time. Yet, we know that cannabis also causes some people to feel paranoia, increase their anxiety or feeling of dread, and ultimately lead to manic states and express other, uh, mental disorders. Uh, this is because cannabis has, uh, can lead to physical changes in the brain over time. The repeated exposure to chemicals found in cannabis can have profound impacts both to the body and brain. Uh, youth are especially affected by their, uh, because their body and brain development are at their peak, uh, when they are under 20 years old. Uh, early exposure to cannabis use among youth may increase their risk for dependency, addiction, schizophrenia, and other mental disorders in, into adulthood. Uh, research has shown that at the earlier in age when cannabis use starts, the chances of these outcome, uh, outcomes increase, uh, leading to poor quality of life and health, uh, as adults. Uh, the most current data available presented here comes from the California Healthy Kids Survey, which is collected from a randomized sample of, uh, schools, uh, conducted over a two-year period on seventh, ninth, and eleventh grade students. Uh, this is, uh, county-level data that's also pulled from the Ca- California Youth Cannabis Use Dashboard. Uh, the first table shows lifetime use ranging from 5.2% of seventh graders, up to 27% of eleventh graders. Uh, below that is the reported use in the last 30 days of the survey. Uh, this increase that you see, uh, through the grades reflect, uh, pro- uh, reflect access to cannabis products, usually through social networks such as their friends, family, adults that they know, and now we're seeing, uh, through social media and cell phones. Uh, the data reflects a critical turning point, uh, and a new baseline for cannabis use because the survey has been changed, uh, from prior years, uh, to include not only smoking cannabis, but also vaping, dabbing, eating, and drinking cannabis, uh, in the questions that they ask questions for this, of the students. Uh, we hope to see data, additional data, uh, in the near future to help us see, uh, more of a trend. It was in November 2016 that Proposition 64 passed in California, and the first legal sales of cannabis, uh, started in 2018. The Adult Use of Marijuana Act legalized recreational sale and use of cannabis to people aged 21 and older. Uh, it also set up a cannabis tax fund where 60% of, was intended for, to fund youth education, prevention, early intervention treatment, and school retention programs in California. Uh, since the passage of Prop 64, uh, surveys have been done on youth perceptions about cannabis, and we have identified several, uh, key factors that raise a concern, uh, about the, uh, use now. Uh, these surveys are part of the California, uh, Healthy Kids Survey, and again, looking at their knowledge and awareness of cannabis use. So, one, one observation is that cannabis, um, must not be harmful to health if the law, uh, to legalize recreational use was adopted. Uh, this is reflected also in a social stigma, uh, attached to cannabis, cannabis use today. Uh, we see celebrities and other adults who, who are more open about their own, uh, use, and in pop culture, where we see it in movies, videos, and other media. Uh, plus, they see and hear, uh, about legal retail dispensaries and advertising in public. Uh, the perceived cannabis use of, uh, perceived risk of cannabis use among California students is actually lower than the rest of the country. Uh, California continues to have a higher rate of past use, uh, in past use in the month, uh, of individuals aged 12 and older, uh, lower than the, uh, U.S. Well, another significant concern is that many teens and youth misunderstand how the drug can affect the body and the brain. They fail to see how cannabis use differs between adults and younger people, and that the developmental phase of youth and teens are going through, uh, during that phase, uh, has significant consequences into adulthood. Uh, the idea that cannabis is safer, uh, than other drugs makes it more appealing. Uh, again, there's a failure to connect with early initiation, long-term use, and dependency into chronic, uh, health outcomes from youth to adult, adulthood. And then lastly, the youth tobacco smoking rates, we've seen, uh, decreased significantly over the years, uh, but with the introduction of vaping and e-cigarettes, uh, this, uh, has slowed. Uh, the ease of use and initial availability of, uh, e-cigarette devices and vaping products really paved the way for a potentially new generation of tobacco users, uh, that are also, uh, perceiving lower risk of harm from these devices. Uh, these devices have also been adapted for use with cannabis. If you recall, the E Valley outbreak that happened in 2019, 2020 showed how widely, uh, the cannabis, uh, chemical components can be associated, uh, with this condition, and, uh, it was likely that the, uh, vitamin E acetate, uh, which was manufactured illegally and distributed across the country. Uh, the availability of cannabis and chemical, and their chemical extracts has increased the variety of the different methods that, uh, can be used, uh, that used to be limited to smoking or ingesting food. Uh, now, we see, uh, them in different, different food types as well as in drinks. Uh, vaping is the really most popular, uh, method, uh, and legal method still, uh, because it was not, these items were not banned, uh, with the recent Senate Bill 793, which only, uh, banned the tobacco products. Uh, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Daniel. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
So, moving into the program proposal, we want to focus on youth and the detrimental effects to their developing brain. A quick breakdown of the fiscal request. We're looking to start immediately this fiscal year, so we will dedicate a part-time health educator, and we would like to develop, um, marketing and look at marketing contracts. And then into the end of next fiscal year, we'll have still a dedicated part-time public health educator, and we'll look at implementation, evaluation, and contact, contract continuation for that, um, fiscal year. So, the details of that, this is a startup pilot program. Its focus is on youth and youth input. What that means is that we, when we are starting our marketing, we actually would like to have youth involved in getting the message to youth, because they're the ones who can actually answer to what youth may be more receptive to hearing when it comes to a cannabis message. But we'll be also working with, uh, marketing contractors. Right now, currently, we do have available resources, um, from the state and CDC and SAMSSA on, uh, messaging, which we can draw from while we develop additional material. But we want to focus on the awareness for mental health risks, and we also would like to, um, look at developing local media resources. Again, all with public health oversight. The intervention that we plan on doing will involve education materials specific for youth, and again, with the help of youth. But then we also want to do workshops and presentations, like town hall meetings, um, community groups, because we're also wanting to get this message to their parents. We would like to collaborate with, um, the schools because getting the message out, um, that way is pretty easy reach to, to target youth. Um, and we, and other youth-serving stakeholders as far as our collaboration efforts. The engagement in this is really important because the more we get engaged in our local community, the more likely we are to sustain this program beyond, um, what we've detailed till the end of next fiscal year. So, talking about sustainability, we are looking at early intervention because that's where prevention efforts will be made to actually, hopefully, uh, deter youth from even trying, um, cannabis. So, we have, um, just found out, um, after this, these slides were produced, that we are going to be engaging in a partnership with the County Office of Ed, who will be, um, able to put someone into schools to help us with this effort. So, we're, we're very happy about that, as, as looking forward to sustainability. We also have at our fingertips the, um, ongoing funding opportunities from the state. If available, we are happy to apply for more funds. We do plan to measure success, which will be ongoing. We can look at data collection, but also our success in collaboration. The more we collaborate with, the better. So, the, the amount of, of agencies we collaborate with, and then, of course, success stories. What are those outcomes is something that we can track and share. So, just a few examples of messaging that's out there, but again, I want to emphasize that we will be working with youth to design more. This is just a quick reach for what we can start with. And I'll just go through these pretty quickly. Um, the messaging that's out there that's focusing on youth and, uh, mental health, this is an example here from the state. Healthy mind, healthy life. And then here's another one that's a little more direct on the effects of mental health. And then a more casual approach of just trying to engage in conversation with youth. But we really would like to see, um, what speaks to youth the most when they look at these, and if they could help design one as well. And last, um, is one example of messaging for a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments for Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that, uh, in response to this board's interest, uh, you've brought this forward. All those messages are great, and, uh, to get them out there and engage with the public as much as possible, especially with students, student bodies, uh, might even be fun to do, uh, uh, you know, talk to the drama class about doing reenactments of a change of how a person through use of, of cannabis is going to affect them in the long run. So, uh, I think this is fantastic, and I look forward to the board approving, and you guys moving forward. So, thank you very much for taking, uh, the, the impetus from the board and running with it really, and coming back to us with a plan of action. Truly appreciate it. Good job, Director Dietrich. Thank you.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. And that, yes, and thank you for being here today, and thank you for this presentation. As I mentioned before, you know, you see so much on tobacco. You know, you smoke a cigarette, you're going to get cancer. And, you know, of course, smoking is bad, but you never hear anything, or very limited do you hear anything about cannabis, and people, I think, or especially our youth, think cannabis is better than cigarettes, and, uh, if you smoke marijuana, whatever it may be, that you don't have the ill-health effect. And we need to make sure as a county, as a public health department, you know, to let kids and parents that, that's not true, and that, you know, marijuana, smoking marijuana or cannabis can have a, at, um, adverse effect on your, your health. So, I think this is, bless you. This is, um, paramount that we do get this information out there, that we put it on social media, put it in our schools, and, you know, hit it just as hard as we hit tobacco. So, thank you very much for, you know, taking this forward and pushing it. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. Great, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Buckman, would you like to come back and, uh, finish up item number 30, approval of the agreement of third extension of agreement, A-361 with Foothill, San Antonio? How'd it go?
Good morning again. Our vendor is willing to, uh, reduce the previously negotiated one-year notification period to six months.
That's great. Any comment from any supervisor?
Um, Chairman, I know Supervisor Dean had a motion, and I did a second.
Okay. Can you repeat the motion? I forget what it was.
Uh, I will do my best, uh, but you may have to, uh, renew it.
Should we wait for Supervisor Patty?
No.
No?
So, the motion was that we, uh, proceed with putting it out to bid immediately, which will take six months, and then, uh, bid will close in a year. If by chance, the existing contractor does not receive the, the, the contract, he will have another six months to shut down operation.
How does that sound, Supervisor Buckman?
Yeah, we, we plan on changing the, the one-year language in the contract to six months, and that would result in roughly the timeline you laid out.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Uh, would it be possible, rather than try to do this on the fly, uh, to bring this back, uh, at a meeting in March, and that way we can work out the, the fine details of the language, and that'll still-
That would be one year and two weeks. That would be one year and two weeks.
I thought it expired, I thought it expired April.
No, if, the, the amendment needs to be, or the extension needs to be approved by the board before March 2nd, otherwise the contract terminates in early April.
Got it. Okay, so just, I, I, I'll do my best to summarize, I think, what the board wants to do here. First of all, I think you, in order not to have a break in service, you want to approve the addendum, but you want to approve the addendum with a modification which indicates that the county can provide six months termination notice and that the board further directs the director to put together, put together an RFP to, to solicit bids to take over.
And bring a recommendation to the board.
Right. And then also, I suppose the direction would be as soon as this new addendum goes into effect, which would be April 2nd of 2024, a six-month termination notice be provided to current vendor?
No, that, that, that notification would only happen after conclusion of the competitive selection process if, if we go, we were proposing to go with a different vendor.
Okay, got it. I, at least I know what's, the intent is, I, I don't know if anybody else does.
And the last thing, the final thing, if I could, Chair, I understood from the previous conversation is that we will bring back a discussion item to the board to discuss the approach on the franchise hauler agreements.
That'd be great. Next board meeting would be great.
That's, that's a little quick, but we'll come back as quickly as possible.
All right.
We'll suspend all your other duties until then.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Is, is there a second? We have a first and a second. And, okay, vote please. Oh yeah, it's the consent calendar, so this is a separate item? Or should we vote all in one consent calendar?
I, I would recommend we, we vote on this separately.
Okay, item number 30, we're going to vote separately. Do you all in favor? That be appropriate? Okay, we have a first and a second and we'll vote. Okay, the motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckman. Okay, and then the rest of the consent calendar, I would like a motion to accept it.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second and we'll vote, please.
No, I can't. Who was the seconder?
Okay, the motion passes five zero for the consent calendar. Moving on to our nine AM scheduled morning public, public hearings, CEO's office conduct a public hearing under the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act approving the insurance of solid waste disposal revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, a joint exercise of powers of authority and public entity of the state of California in an amount of not to exceed 20 million for the purpose of financing capital projects at Ford landfill 99 and 99 South Austin Road, Manteca. With an aggregate, with an aggregate amount not to exceed 400 million at various Republic Services' solid waste disposal facility sites throughout California. Good morning, Ms. Mo.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board of Supervisors. I'll try to keep this very short and brief. This item is to conduct a public hearing for the issuance of solid waste revenue disposal bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA, for Republic Services to finance capital projects at various Republic Services' solid waste disposal facility sites. This public hearing is required solely for the purposes of satisfying the Tefra requirements or the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act and to provide members of the community an opportunity to speak in favor or against these tax-exempt bonds for the financing of the project. Very important to note, San Joaquin County has no financial or legal obligation or liability for the repayment of the bonds or for the project, and we solely assist CMFA with scheduling this public hearing. As such, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors conduct the public hearing under the requirements of Tefra and adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA. Should the board have any questions, we have Connor O'Brien from the CMFA present along with representatives from Republic Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I see none. At this time, I'm going to open the public comment. Anyone like to come forward and comment on this item? I see none. There one? All right, we got one.
Hello, my name is Jerry Jacy with San Joaquin County Farm Bureau. Just seeing this on the agenda last weekend, did a little research. And as of right now, Ford landfill, behind our 27,000 acre vacant order issued by the regional water quality control. So my thoughts on this would be that these bonds should not be issued until they become in compliance. Two and a half of the 10 items they are supposed to have completed by last July. And if they, if that is not available, that they should, any monies brought in by this bond should be used directly to bring themselves into compliance and to protect the wells, both domestic and ag that they are impacting right now with pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Okay, I see no one. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Patty, thank you. To address the concern that was just raised about being in compliance, does anybody have any information on, on the issues that are raised and being in compliant within a period of time?
So there are representatives from Republic Services should be here. I would defer that to them to answer that question.
Hi, I'm Kelly Johansson with Republic Services. I am not familiar with any issues that we're not complying with at this point in time. All our standings are good and, and I'm not aware of anything that's out of compliance, nor do we have any NOVs or that I'm aware of at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, I'll just finish, through the chair, then I would ask if Farm Bureau, which, you know, they bring up very valid points, we all can, I know Republic, you as a responsible, you care about the groundwater and conditions as it would affect agriculture, but any of these issues, if you would maybe follow through and send a report back to, to our CEO's office and make certain that we are up to date and where it should be.
Sure.
And with that, Chair, I would make a motion to approve barring any other discussion. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we got a second here. We have a vote, please.
Real quick, Council, this is just a, a public hearing, so what exactly are we, are we, what exactly are we voting on?
I'm sorry, you're voting to approve allowing this JPA to issue the bonds. It, it's something which does not put the county on the hook, but it's a procedural requirement under state law in order for the JPA to issue the bonds or have, have the authority to issue the bonds.
At this time, the motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussing general government, item number one. District three approved the use of 27,500 from Supervisor District three funds to be the Boys and Girls Club of Manteca and Lathrop for team room transformation project. Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chair, and I've got items one and two to discuss as for, for discretionary funds. These are for youth programs. The Boys and Girls Club of Manteca is longstanding, they depend on private funding and they've got a need that they're basic and their, their, their regular budgeting hasn't allowed yet for them to accomplish. So this is kind of an upgrade, bring them into the 21st century with good use of funds for physical upgrades in itself, program supplies, technology integration and a little bit of a contingency as construction and, and works may go through. So it's up to 27,500, looking for board approval.
Yes. Would you like to do one or two together or one do them separately?
I think we have to take a vote separately.
Okay.
As it is, yes, we have.
Okay, would that be a, you got a motion there? Is that a motion?
I make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second? We have a first and a second for item number one. We have a vote, please.
And Chairman, real quick, don't we supposed to do a consensus agenda item, do a public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see, open public comment. Anybody like to comment on this item? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Rickman.
No, I'm sure you won't. My name is Danny Daly and I am the new CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Manteca and Lathrop, and it is my honor to be here today to request these funds. The Boys and Girls Club of Manteca has been in existence since 1981 and during that time, there have been some upgrades, but we need quite a bit of work to reach the current needs of this time's youth. Social media, technology brings children to enjoy their time separately and there's not a lot of collaboration. And one of the things here at the Boys and Girls Club that we're hoping to do is bring our teen center kind of to the current times and allow them the opportunity to have access to things like possibly a podcast studio, video gaming equipment that would allow them to stream and, and interact with other boys and girls clubs across the nation in competitions. So what we're hoping to do is come to you today, request these funds and bring a place in our community for the teens to collaborate together and just have a bunch of fun instead of being in their own homes separate from each other. So thank you so much for hearing this.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Rickman. I mean Ding, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, being on the board of the Lodi Boys and Girls Club, we just completed our team room last year and I, I'm quite frankly, I was why do they need a separate room? It really is an amazing thing because you want those kids, especially when their parents aren't home, you want them at the club. So it has made a huge difference. So congratulations and best of luck to you.
Anyone else like to comment on this item? I'll close the public comment form and bring it back. We do have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yeah, just Chairman, I'd like to say thank you for coming in to share a little bit more detail and depth of use of funds. You know, we all recognize the need to support our youth in the programs and so I'm sure we're going to resounding a level of support, except Rickman, he's a little bit difficult sometimes to convince, but, but for the most part, thanks for being here all morning to get to this item.
Chairman, I don't know Supervisor Patty wants to continue to talk or not, but you do a great, the Boys and Girls Club does a great job here in San Joaquin County, so keep up the great work.
Okay, do we have a second? Was there a second? We have a first and a second and we'll vote, please. Okay, motion approved five zero. Thank you very much. Moving on. Moving on to item number two.
Close up on the guy on the upper left corner, please.
Item number two, I mean, session item number two, district three, approve the use of 102,500 from Supervisor District three funds to the Hoover Tyler Little League Project. Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chair, and I'll try and be a little bit brief. And this is working in conjunction with your office. This facility, come to find out, a lot of, I've reached out to the Little League Association in the county and a lot of Little Leagues are affiliated with school districts. Hoover Tyler is not. And having grown up there playing baseball in the seventies and I, you know, coached baseball over there, they, the facilities are going through some renovations and there's, there's just a punch list of things, additional things that they need. And again, working with your office, Chairman, I, using my discretionary funds, there's a, there's, there's a great level of need and, and utility of these funds for them. So I'd make a motion to approve the use of these funds. May I have a public comment or not? But, but thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I'm going to open public comment at this moment. Anyone else like to comment on this item? I see none, but close public comment. Supervisor Patty, want to thank you for donating these funds to my district in Hoover Tyler. It's money well spent. Anyone else like to comment?
I'll go ahead and do a second, or listen, is it your district? You want to do a second?
I will second. We have a vote, please. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Supervisor Patty. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, discussion to consider the board supervisors becoming the appointing authority for department and divisioning heads requiring a minimum of two qualifying finalists and up to three candidates to be interviewed by the board regarding the hiring of the, of these positions. Supervisor Patty?
Yes, thank you, Chair. In the twilight of this last year of mine and your service, I thought it might be interesting to bring to board discussion, and really it's the will of the board here, but it's been my experience in my seven years, going from way back at the beginning, I have seen appointments happen in this county and this is not a knock on anybody, any recent appointments in any capacity, but I've seen appointments happen and if something doesn't quite work out, it's we, the board, that are answering to the public. And what I've often seen is there's just a consent item, somebody comes before us and there is zero options of who we have to choose for certain positions. So I thought it's worthwhile to bring to the board. We see, I see a position open now for our purchasing department. And I'm not looking or thinking in any way that these departments will answer and operate under the board supervisors. I just believe that it would be best, we here in the county would best serve the citizens if we have at least two top candidates to choose from, that we as, when we make these decisions to appoint, at least we're seeing and weighing out the benefits of one versus another versus somebody coming through and it's just basically ratifying a process that's happened outside of our participation when, again, we're the ones that, we're the face of the county, we're out there answering, we're the ones that are going to be subject to scrutiny if, and when anything goes wrong. So I thought it's just worthwhile bringing to the board for discussion in the twilight of my time here. We're looking at one or two appointments, maybe, in the next 10 months that I'm here or nine and a half months, whatever it may be. So it's, you know, we've got Supervisor Rickman, I'm certain is going to be reelected, we've got two new super, two supervisors over there, potentially another, you know, six-plus years. So just wanted to bring it out for discussion and see where the sentiment was with this board. Thank you, Chair.
To comment on this item? Supervisor Ding?
You know, we, we did go through the appointment process for the Office of Emergency Services, which already went directly to the board, but we saw that there, there was a difference in talent between the first round and the second talent or when we pushed it. And, and I, I would like to suggest to staff, especially when, I, I guess, when, when you're doing your recruitment, it seems to me that it's been kind of isolated on where we're going with that recruitment and I'd like to be brought in the loop. However, I don't think you can manage employees unless you hire them. I think if the county administrator, nothing personal, but you know, he hires bad people and they don't work out, we get rid of the county administrator, not the staff. I mean, it's just the way it works, but you can't cut off his, you know, hands to, to hire and manage who he wants. But at the same do, I, I do have the concern of how broadly, you know, we're going out and we're, we're spreading the net when we are recruiting people. But being in a position Jay's been in before, you've, you've got to give him the ability to hire and, and fire on, on his committee chairs who he wants. And if you have a problem with, you know, what he's, what he's doing at the county, you replace the county administrator, not the staff. My, my two cents worth.
Supervisor Kenba?
So one of the only concerns about that is that will it sway people from applying to work for San Joaquin County if they know that they have to go in front of the board? And the problem with that is the board changes. I mean, so if you do that, you know what I mean? I, I don't want it to curtail folks wanting to come and work here if there's uncertainty of the board or they watch board meetings and it's something that they don't want to come partake in. So that is kind of one of the concerns that I have and I mean, I agree with Supervisor Ding, you know what I mean? If it's the, the administrators hire, then, then they should be held accountable for their hires. The thing that is hard is, and we, we do this in evaluations, it's difficult for me to say, say on the daily what all the county departments do because I don't manage them. So I always saw myself as a policy and procedure kind of guy, but I mean, we also do have to get inside, kind of some of the weeds as we saw today, garbage, you know, and, and things that we have to specialize. For me, it's, it's the staff people that are hired in their field and I come from washing cars, so I mean, I haven't hired a lot of these people that are, I mean, I've obviously in my professional career, I mean, my political career, we've hired professional people. So it's, sometimes it's a difficult area and I, I see where Supervisor Patty's coming from because I mean, it, it ties our hands if we don't agree with how somebody is doing their job and whether our perception of it is doing a job well done. So there's variables that are, are part of this. I mean, and I was just wondering timing-wise, how this would fit in if we would lose candidate... how this would fit in, if we would lose candidates, because, you know what I mean, if we're adding, where they have to come in front of the Board, because I think that's a problem now, I mean, we've seen it at the Sheriff's Department, where if they don't offer that job expeditiously, then the person leaves and goes and finds a job somewhere else. So it's just kind of, there's a bunch of different variables that I think come into this, and that's just my two cents, so thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Rickman, would you like to weigh in on this? Okay, I'm in a position where I think that department heads should have some authority on who they hire, who they hire and who they want to work with. I think Jay's done a good job hiring who's in the CAO's office. I'm happy with everyone, I know Greg does, is a hard worker, and he picks good people, and I don't think it's our job to be pick their employees, so I don't know if it makes sense, I mean, we could hire them, and then what's stopping them from hiring somebody? So it doesn't make sense to me, but you know, we can all discuss it, and I see CAO wants to speak. Jay, would you like to speak?
Uh, thank you, Chair, via Poodwa. I just want to make a few comments, since it would impact my department, my, is some of my functions, I appreciate Supervisor Ding's comment, and I think he's right on point, that if you bifurcate the authority and the responsibility, it's hard to hold that person accountable because they didn't in fact make the hire. And I agree with you, I should be held accountable for the hires, and if they're good, great, and if they're not good, then folks should come to me. And I will say that in my last three evaluations, I haven't heard anything about bad hires that I've made, and I've actually replaced nine of the 10 division directors and assistant directors in my three years that I've been here, as well as I think 70% of the CAO team in my office is either new or new in their position, so it's not like I haven't been doing quite a bit of hiring since I've been here. And as far as recruitment issues, to address what Supervisor Canepa mentioned, yes, the hiring would be delayed, because you'd have, you only have two Board meetings a month, you'd have to run them through in closed session. Any rejections that the Board makes, Supervisor Ding mentioned multiple recruitment, that gets hard, it also slows down the hiring process, and the way that the language is written in this, there had to be at least two candidates, and I think as we've seen in our recent recruitments for department heads, you get one great candidate, you grab them, and if we only had one, we would have to go back to the well, which would further complicate things. Great candidates are not gonna hang around that long. The legacy process, it's, I did a little research on this, as far as I could see, this process has been in place since the county's been around. I've never worked in an organization in my 45 years where this kind of bifurcation has happened, and I think one additional challenge is, I won't be in this position forever, I am, believe it or not, getting up there in years, and I think that would also present a challenge for recruiting your next CAO, when they would find that they would have that kind of a constraint coming on board. So I just wanted to point those things out before you all voted.
Hey, thank you. This time, I'm gonna open a public comment. Anyone else like to make a comment on this item? Our Sheriff Patrick Rithro.
Hey, good morning. Yeah, I just wanted to step forward, being an elected official, and you know, we're blessed right now with the Board that we have, and obviously, we would be comfortable with you guys being part of that process, you know, and if that was to occur, but what happens next? What happens in the 10 months? And I've gotta be honest with you, that I see a few people, candidates that are running right now, that I would not be comfortable with them and trust them to have a unbiased opinion about department heads that they hire, and that's what we really need, and I think that's what we have with having the CAO, whoever sits in that chair, doesn't have any bias, other than they're either gonna make him look good, or her look good, or make him or her look bad, and so they're gonna pick the best of the best. Where we, as elected officials, well, we may have somebody that we would like sitting over a particular department, and they may not be the best person for the job, and I think not having to have that responsibility for you guys, or to have people coming to you, asking you guys, hey, I'd like to be the head of that department, just another person coming at you, I think it's nice for you to be able to say, hey, I don't have any part of that, that's up to the CAO, and again, I think Supervisor Ding's right, if whoever's sitting in the chair screws it up, well then, he's the one you hold accountable, and so that's just the way I see it as a department head.
Well, thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on this item? I see none of a closed public comment. Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman, and I think Supervisor Ding, I mean, we're all, mentioning his name, he made an excellent point, is that, hey, you had bad hires, and you know, something goes wrong, it's holding the individual accountable.
Okay, you don't like to make a motion then?
Well, I don't know if any motion needs to be made on this, through the Chair, County Council may clarify, this is more of a discussion, or I don't know if the way it's been presented needs a motion, but I'll say that one of the pitfalls of, you know, in government service, you hire somebody, you're stuck with them after a probationary period, there's not a lot of turnover in departments, so again, this is your guys' sentiment, I appreciate the Sheriff sharing, the CAO's position, I've had some experiences with departments that are hired, even they might be scrutinized, and I've seen them excel and do great, I've also seen people hired with great celebration, and as the only candidate, or the best candidate we had, and they were disasters. So, and they didn't leave, they weren't easy to go until they finally moved on on their own. So that's a pitfall, but that's part of government positions, and so I appreciate that we had this discussion, and your guys' Board going forward, so through the Chair, do we need a motion in any capacity?
Not unless you want to give direction to staff.
Okay, no, I think we're fine, and I appreciate everybody's feedback. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, then, moving on to item number four, discussion and potential directions to the draft letter to oppose AT&amp;T California's request to California Public Utilities Commission, CPUC, to remove their obligation under California law to provide traditional landline phone service, proceeding number A23-03-003, District Five, Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, I brought this here on the agenda item today for discussion mainly, and with the option of, you know, following an official position as a Board in opposition to AT&amp;T's California CPUC request to remove their obligation under California law to provide traditional landline phone services. I know my office has been contacted by many residents here, at least in my district and in San Joaquin County as a whole, and also other agencies here in San Joaquin County, and this is a very hot topic, and there was just a PUC meeting, the new CAIA, in which the Board of Supervisor chambers there, which drew a full house. So I thought it would be best to bring it here and get the Board's opinion, and before we go forward, but the reason for the recommendations that I mention is, you know, San Joaquin County encompasses an area of, you know, over 1,400 square miles, much of its rural, with seven cities, and possibly eight cities, we'll see here in March. Cell service in our county can be spotty with dead zones, areas that don't receive cell signals, either because it's too far from the nearest cell tower, or because it's being blocked by a building or something in the environment. This was emphasized in recent years when a new cell tower was authorized while opposed by residents in one of our cities. It's reasonable to expect that we have residents that rely on their landlines, whether it be seniors, those with disabilities, or rural occupants, not only for daily routine use, but as a last resort for emergency situations. And the background, the San Joaquin County residents have begun receiving notices of AT&amp;T application to the CPUC, that if approved, would remove AT&amp;T's obligation under California law to provide traditional landline service. And as again, you know, when I brought PJ&amp;E's, the PJ&amp;E issue up here, you know, I believe it's incumbent upon us as elected representatives to normally express opposition on a resident's behalf when we need to do so, but to use our resource, provide, and make readily available the tools and venue for them to express themselves, in which this agenda items has in it also. But with that being said, I know there's some individuals here I would like to talk to, but I was wondering if there's a representative from AT&amp;T here, if I could call or Chairman.
I have two comments forward, I can open public comment? When I open public comment, will that be fine?
Yeah, it's up to you, you're the Chairman.
Any other Supervisor like to comment? Supervisor Ding.
And you can address this, because there is concerns with it, and I appreciate you bringing this forward, regardless of whether it's time-sensitive or not, for some reason, every senior in San Joaquin County heard this, and our calls have been, you know, ringing off the, our phones have been, well, they have been ringing off, because we don't have landlines in our house anymore. If, you know, my kids had their way, it'd be just the opposite, all the seniors, anybody over 50, they'd have their cellphones taken away, and we'd have to use a landline, probably make them happier. But yeah, I just, that was the main concern, is the seniors right now, I mean, they really think you're gonna go out there and like pull the line out of their house, and they're gonna have to, you know, rely on their cellphone.
Anyone else like to speak? This time I'll open a public comment, I do have two speakers lined up here, the first being Brandon Baranco.
Hi, good afternoon, thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Brandon Baranco, and I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T to request this item be postponed to a future meeting. I want to have the ability to reach out to each of your offices individually and give you in-depth information of why we're deciding to move forward with the carrier of last resort filing. I want to be clear, if the CPUC approves our filing, no one will lose phone service, period. That is a commitment AT&amp;T has made, and we will continue to abide by. We are required by the CPUC and FCC to continue working with government before any transition of technology is done. All our filing is asking is for the state to provide a plan to transition remaining copper customers to a modern-day technology of fiber. In our 21-state footprint, only California hasn't granted us this relief. 20 states have, only California hasn't. And those states have a plan, and they have a plan on when this network is going to fail. It's not a question, if it is going to fail, it will fail. We can no longer get the parts we need to maintain it. So we've gone before the CPUC to have a plan on how to transition, and what certain products would qualify as adequately as a catch product. AT&amp;T is the only telecommunications company in the state that is required to maintain two networks, one a high-speed fiber-based network, and another an antiquated copper network, which costs the company a billion dollars a year to maintain, while only having a million users in California. We believe we need to build the best communication network to the residents of San Joaquin County, and that is why we've invested $8.6 billion over the last two years across the state to build reliable wireless and fiber-based network. I want to emphasize that the question, oh, is not if the network will fail, but when. There's going to be a day when this network will not be able to be repaired, and heaven forbid that happens during a disaster. So as soon as we are able to have a plan to roll out this transformation, this modernization, I think everyone will be a little, will be safer. For a local perspective, copper theft is a major issue in the Stockton area, in the San Joaquin County. By transitioning to a modern, high-speed fiber network, we'll be removing the incentive for thieves to break our network, and there is no market for fiber strands, there's no market for glass. Public safety is a major issue, fiber is easier to repair or replace within a network that is damaged, and in many and all high-fire severity zones, our facilities have 72 hours of power backup to maintain wireless coverage in case of emergency. We believe the residents of San Joaquin County deserve the best, most reliable communications network on the market, and for those reasons, that's why we have filed with the CPUC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandon.
Chairman, before you leave, I need to ask him some questions. So you just mentioned that, you know, your AT&amp;T is not going to take over or take away landline services, but if you look at the article, for example, here, it's a CNN, and it says, just last week, AT&amp;T applied for a waiver that we're allowed to stop servicing traditional landlines in California. AT&amp;T, and it goes on, a part of us, we've been moved by phone service providers to replace older copper wire-based telephone system lines, also known as plain old telephone service, with faster and more advanced technology that doesn't work with landlines. So when you're talking about cell service, and you're talking about internet, ethernet, you know, devices, and one of the issues that, you know, we hear out of these hearings, and like I mentioned at the last PUC meeting, was that, yeah, you have cell services, you have internet, and those, but when power goes out, those don't work, or your phone isn't charged. So how is this new technology that you were just talking about, deal with the issue of power outage, or earthquakes, and caused by earthquakes, weather disasters?
Yeah, no, thank you for the question Supervisor. I want to just state that there's a misconception that copper is foolproof, and if the power goes out, copper lines will be able to be used as communications. That's not true. Both copper and fiber services require power to operate. The belief that copper landlines will always work without power is a myth, and gives customers a false sense of security. Network equipment and customer phones still often need power, copper is not a foolproof connection in a power outage. And to your point about, if there is a power outage, and people's cellphones aren't used, or their home wifi is down, we offer batteries packs to customers, so they can maintain their wifi from 40 to 80 hours.
So what if there's an emergency that goes beyond the 40, 80 hours? And also, I don't know about anybody else in this room, but I know when my power goes out, my landline works. I mean, I still have a landline, just because of that purpose, of the emergency purposes. Also, here on the PUC meeting that I mentioned earlier, the one in UCAIA, the judge, Paul Bird, I guess, asked one of your AT&amp;T representatives to address one of the main concerns that had come up in the testimony. Briefly, what is AT&amp;T's specific plan if the copper infrastructure goes out of service? And this individual replied, it's my understanding that the definition of alternate services would be worked out through the evidentiary proceedings based on information that has been submitted. As the Assembly members of the public express their displeasure, then another attorney, or AT&amp;T attorney, Andy Yamana, I guess, told the judge, we submitted over 100,000 pages of evidence in this proceeding, so I'm happy to take this back to my colleagues, and we can get a specific citation for you. So what you're saying here, right now, today, at least in the testimony that was provided to me, that doesn't seem like there's any evidence that, you know, there's gonna be like a backup system, you know, there's landline services that, you know, copper is still pretty good.
It's good now, while we're able to maintain it. Again, I want to just reiterate the fact that parts aren't being made. I jokingly say we're going to eBay to purchase parts, but that's only a little bit of a joke. So California needs a plan, and that's why we filed, and that is, when you quoted the evidentiary hearings, that is an opportunity for AT&amp;T to present its case to the state, to say, these are catch products, these are alternatives, do they require, are they meeting your standards or not? And if they're not, we'll go back and we'll continue working with the state and federal government to ensure that any replacement meets those standards.
And there's another, this was, this is from KTVU, Fox Two, and they had one of our Assembly members, Gil Pellerin from Santa Cruz, in regards to this issue, it is not just a landline, it's a lifeline, and we're dealing with a situation where this could be the difference between somebody surviving through an emergency, or losing their life during an emergency. In a nutshell, I think what we're all concerned about, and especially those in rural communities, and those, you know, seniors, I mean, it's easy to say, hey, we'll give you a cellphone, use a cellphone, and that's not putting people minds at ease, and I think we've all, we all have cellphones, I mean, I carry two cellphones with me, and many times, you know, you see the SOS on there, or, you know, your battery's just about dead, we've all been in that spot, and like, oh God, I need to charge my phone, right? Or I forgot to charge my phone, you don't have to do that with a lifeline, or a landline. So you can see where the public's concerns are, and I just want to know, I mean, you're talking about new technology and stuff. And I just want to know, I mean, you're talking about new technology and stuff coming on, but is it a guarantee that this new technology is going to work like the proven and effective use of a, of a landline? I mean, you see it, I was just trying to look for some information here, if I can find it real quick. I have notes upon notes and article upon article here. But it was, what it, what it, what it mentioned was that there was a, some kind of emergency in which like hundreds of thousands of people lost their cellphone services and it'd be AT&amp;T, Verizon and so on. And what worked was the old-fashioned landline, which you're saying that maybe I, you know, obsolete in a few years. But wouldn't AT&amp;T wait to remove landlines until that technology is a hundred percent like you have landline? Because the technology you're talking about now, cell, you know, cellphone, internet, ethernet, it still has its downfall that landlines don't. That's a huge, long question, but, or a comic question.
Yeah. There are a couple points just to address your comments. One is, one of our catch products that is before the CPUC and FCC right now as a viable alternative is having a phone, like your phone in your house right now, your, your landline, and just being connected to a wireless option. So, it's not like a cellphone where seniors or people may not be able to know how to use that technology. It will be the exact same phone you're using right now, except it's just a different technology behind making the connection. And to your point, we will not be able to turn any one service off if we do not have FCC, CPUC-approved technology.
And what exactly is that?
As a catch product, the product I just mentioned, which is a phone, the phone that you use in your house right now, connected through an AT&amp;T technology that will use wireless instead of copper, but yet has the exact same functionality that people are accustomed to.
Right. But did they have the downside of, I mean, you're talking about internet connections and stuff like that, you know, that's the thing, power goes out and we have floods here. Knock, well, excuse me, knock on wood here, we have, we, sometimes.
Yeah.
Historically.
Yeah.
Have floods here. And we talk to people, you know, without power. Go to Crowell Hollow Canyon, and that's my district, and cellphones don't work in certain parts of that.
Yeah.
You know? So, you're talking about, you know, internet and that's what I can't get, get around. You keep talking about this new technology, new technology is great, but there is downfalls that could jeopardize, I mean, you know, our services or as a county to contact our residents. I mean, for example, when we do emergency notifications, you know, a lot of time we call hard lines, landlines, you know, folks' homes.
Yeah, I.
But that's, that's, Chair, oh, Vice Chair, that's, I'm good for right now.
Okay, thank you. I just had one question. So, basically what you're telling me is AT&amp;T is trying to push the state to have a plan?
Yes.
Is the, is the goal?
Yes.
And then, so, I mean, and I get it because there's a lot of fixed income people and everybody elderly that use landlines. So, then if you did do that, you wouldn't, you'd figure out a way so those people could afford the new technology?
Yeah.
Is the goal, right? So, I mean, that's the goal of this thing, not saying, "Hey, we're taking it away." So, what is it, a billion dollars into how many people? I mean, that's crazy. What is it per person?
One million, less than one million people in the state of California have copper landlines.
Because my phone won't go to a billion on the number. So, what is that per customer? You could buy them, you could buy each one of them, the updated new phone, but the updated phone doesn't exist yet. Thousand bucks? You could buy them iPhone 14s. So, there's a technology, so you can't buy that for the people that need these yet?
That is actually part of our filing where we have offered to transition people to a newer technology by giving them phones, by giving them catch products, by giving them power packs, so they're able to operate their phones if there is a power outage. That's all on, that is all on the table, being considered in our filing.
Okay, okay. At this moment, we'll go to public comment. So, Andrew, I'm gonna mess up your last name, Janowski. Come on down.
Thank you, Supervisors. Once again, Andrew Janacy, San Joaquin Farm Bureau. We've received numerous phone calls from our members on this issue. We've already kind of talked about the availability of cell service in the rural, especially in the eastern part of the county. It's spotty if available at all in many areas. These are needed by elderly and in firm, we've discussed that. One thing that AT&amp;T does say in its paperwork here is that they'll provide traditional landline services to our customers until proven alternatives become available, but says nothing about availability. Theoretically, you can get a satellite phone and be just fine, but I'm not sure our members can afford that. I want to make sure and just ask that unless something is in here that says that not only is it a proven, but an affordable option for people to have that available, simply having an option, the way this is written, they would be allowed out. So, while I appreciate them saying that they commit to this, I would like to see that in writing somewhere, preferably in their filings. So, that is my stance. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe next speaker is Mark Cartwright.
You're all right and you're all wrong. I had, I had fiber optic thirty years ago, over thirty years ago with Pacific Bell, works great, except they took it out because the CP, I don't like them, the Public Utilities Commission, I don't trust them. In fact, I don't trust you guys except for Paul. See, I knew I'd get him to smile. You all, you all understand why? Yeah, that's why they're all laughing. So, here's the thing. You're right. The copper's, the copper's old technology and it's not only old technology, it's deteriorating. You can't get it fixed. They shouldn't have to be fixing it. But what you guys can do for your own individual districts is go neighborhood by neighborhood. Isn't that what you do?
We are more than willing to host all.
Through the chair.
Yep. You can just speak and then he'll, he'll speak afterwards.
Yeah, he can do that.
I know, but he needs to get on the mic. You can, you're speaking now.
Am I out of, am I out of order?
Just, you can just speak to the board.
Okay. Well, I'm out of order, but he's right. They can go, they can go neighborhood by neighborhood and you guys, not the state, not the, you can follow up for your own areas to go neighborhood by neighborhood. When I went in two thousand eighteen, got another house here, went to get AT&amp;T, I couldn't get them on the phone. They won't answer the phone call. Terrible customer service, but I'm not supposed to say that to them. They can come through though and do fiber optic for the neighborhood, fiber optic will work. It's not new technology, it's over thirty, forty years old. It's proven. Copper is going to fail. He's right. He's right. Did you understand?
Yes.
Each of you can see in your own districts to make sure that copper, that copper's gone, fiber optic is put in its place and it'll continue and that'll work. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Okay, this time I'm gonna close public comment and I think I have, Sir, Patty, do you have, Sir, you want to speak? Okay, Sir, Patty.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to call upon our Office of Emergency Services Director and I know that, and I want to appreciate Supervisor Rickman and his awareness of what's going on with the PG&E and AT&amp;T, some of this stuff goes under the radar, we don't know everything. So, thank you for bringing this forward to the board for discussion and I did forward to our Office of Emergency Services for our director to take a look and just share, is there talk or sentiment throughout the state? Have you spoke with any contemporaries or also as a previous police chief? Do you have an opinion on this?
So, the easy answer is yes. The biggest problem during any emergency is always communication. It's what's talked about in after-action reports and it's what typically fails us when we need to respond to these types of incidents or crises. Bluntly, we would just be concerned with our ability to communicate during an emergency and be able to push out information to our affected populations. We understand that cellular technology is the technology of the future. My biggest concern is just how we get that information out there. Having as many redundancy is what they call it, having as many options as possible. I did want to provide a couple statistics to you just to consider in your decision. We use a system called Everbridge, which allows customers to opt-in so they can get information during times of crisis. We have over, or just about eight hundred and fifty thousand total registered subscribers in the county. Of those, a hundred and eighty-five thousand are residential landlines and about fourteen thousand, six hundred are business landlines. It's about twenty-three percent of the, the total subscribers to that Everbridge program. So, that's the, the amount of people that we're talking about that would get their information through those particular mediums. So, if they're affected, as long as there's something else that works effectively, we're okay. But I do agree, and I have talked to others, that the direction we are going is cellular and fiber optics and that copper is a dying medium, from what I've been told as well. So, I hope those numbers help.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. So, Chair, so to that point, just understanding where this is coming from and as Supervisor Rickman points out in his letter here, that there are dead zones, there's areas that do not have cell signals. I have that concern and I remember reading an article and watching an interview actually where a public safety expert for the United States government said you should always have at least a ten or twenty-year backup of what used to be. So, we're all, while we're all using cellular and satellites and all these great technologies and the speed of light, what happens when that goes down? Is there a backup? And I do know, as again Supervisor Rickman points out, in my business, I've had power go down for eight, ten, twelve, fifteen hours and the hard line still works. It's a copper line and we have it, we need it. So, we're a rural area. We have a lot of ag, we have representative from the Farm Bureau here speaking out that that we at least should let this community be heard, that we are not San Francisco, we are not Oakland, we are not in a, in a urban environment in our entirety. So, thank you Supervisor Rickman for bringing this forward.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you Supervisor Patty. Mr. Diedrich, he's our public health guy, so we'll get your input on this.
I would agree that ultimately there needs to be a transition to newer technology, but I don't think that we're quite there yet. My understanding, and maybe this is more of a Mark Thomas item, is that nobody with current technology will be displaced until they either terminate that. So, I think really what, what my understanding is, AT&amp;T would not be offering this to new construction or new builds, but clients that have plan O telephone service with the copper wire would still be able to maintain that until there is a transition. But I would indeed, as expressed, communication is vitally important during emergencies and until there's a clear pathway forward and maybe that's where AT&amp;T is pushing the state to get to that point. But ultimately, as fewer and fewer individuals maintain copper wire lines, the cost of maintaining it, the subscriber costs are gonna go up astronomically and is that gonna be subsidized by the public dollar? But ultimately, the future is voice-over IP and newer technologies, but I don't think we're quite there yet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Diedrich. And Mr. Woods from HSA is here. And you're inside, I mean, I'd like to hear from you, of course, but that's why I'm calling you here, just not to look at your pretty face, but, you know, you can, how many folks rely on, you know, landlines and what your clientele that you deal with?
So, Chris Woods, Director of Human Services Agency, Supervisor Rickman through the chair. While I don't have specific numbers on our older adults, I can speak to that our older adults tend to be more dependent on landlines. And whatever occurs, I think communication, we talk about communication, but communication to our older adults is paramount. And what I understand and hearing Supervisor Ding, is our older adults don't understand what is being imposed upon them. And I think it's really important that AT&amp;T bear that burden and communicate with older adults and understand their needs and what impacts them. And I, again, our, I think it's really important that older adults also depend on their landlines for their social network. So, if those landlines go away, their numbers go away and their social network is impacted. So, that's where I come from in terms of the customers that we serve.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Woods. And last, I'd like to talk to Mr. Bagwell from our EMS. Your two cents on this.
Thank you, Supervisor Rickman, Jared Bagwell, EMS Agency, Director of EMS. Just some information on how this would impact EMS and how we use this technology currently. The biggest concern would just be access to the nine-one-one system. That is kind of a backup. When power out is out, you can still use your analog phones to access nine-one-one. The other technology that this is used in is our base hospital and they ring down the other hospitals during disasters, you know, bed counts is currently done in that analog technology. So, I guess the biggest concern is that there is a plan moving forward to replace these technologies, because we do use these in our current systems. There's other things that, to consider such as lifeline alerts, some of those are so-used analog technology. Some of the elevator emergency communication lines are still analog, so I think the biggest concern is that there is a plan to replace this stuff because we still use that technology currently, so.
All right, thank you. And Chair.
Yes.
And lastly, and I'll, I don't know if anybody else wants to speak, but I'll turn it back over to you, but at the end of the day, AT&amp;T has submitted an application to the CPUC that if approved, remove AT&amp;T's obligation under California law to provide traditional landline phone service in a large portion of our territory in California. And this is, comes from AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T's role as a default landline phone service provider, also known as a carrier of last resort or COLR, means that AT&amp;T must provide traditional landline phone service to any potential customer in our service territory or in their service territory. And I don't have a, I mean, I think AT&amp;T is doing a great job with, you know, what you need and do what you need to do and, you know, the way society is moving with, you know, what we mentioned here today. And, and I agree with our Farm Bureau, with Andrew, is that even looking at the PUC in Ucaya, I don't see where the guarantee is or the technology that you're gonna put forward. I mean, and, you know, it may be there, I don't see it. So, and that causes me to, you know, to worry. And at the end of the day, as elected officials, our number one priority over anything else is the safety of our residents. And that's, you know, why it's here today and that is why people are calling. God forbid, you know, we do have an emergency and, you know, say, you know, an earthquake or whatever, some catastrophe and our cell service goes down and our internet goes down and all we have is our landlines. You know, it's been, it's been proven, you've seen it in areas like that, which, you know, it has actually happened and it's not just, you know, a movie. So, and that's my concern, that's why that's here. So, with that being said, Chair, before I make a motion, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Okay, great. Any other, Sir, would you like to comment on something? I see none. Would you like to make a motion, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'll make a, a motion to official, register official position in opposition to AT&amp;T, California CPUC, request remove their obligation under California law to provide traditional landline phone service. Proceeding number A as an Adam, two-three-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-three and direct appropriate staff prepare a letter of opposition for the Chairman's signature on behalf of the Board, inform efforts to inform the public how they can participate in the proceeding and express their concerns.
Is there a second? Do we have a person with a second, a vote please? Oh, Sir, Dean, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm concerned, I understand where you want to go Supervisor Rickman. I, I'm just afraid what you're, you're doing is just the opposite because you're giving the PUC an opportunity to say, "Oh, well, we shouldn't." I, I'm confused about, they're gonna move forward with the fiber optics. We're not losing our landlines. I'm concerned that if we send a letter to the PUC opposing their application, the PUC is gonna take, I think if you're gonna put a, a letter together, it's gotta be more specific, tell them to get off.
I think if you're going to put a a letter together, it's got to be more specific, tell them to get off their ass and 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 get to work on changing the system over like the other twenty states, but telling them not to do anything, that's kind of my understanding. If we send this letter to the PUC saying, don't, don't honor AT&amp;T's request, it gives them a reason not to do anything and that's the problem right now. And then that we just, and then we could state in the letter also that we understand that any actions will not become a reason to pull landlines out of existing homes. It's just the technology and on the messaging is getting there. I, that's my only concern.
And I don't, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that's what it says at all. I think what we're telling the CPUC is to not let AT&amp;T obligation under California law to provide traditional landline phone service go away. So there would still be the carrier or last resorts, they would still have to provide that service.
Okay, I believe we have a first and a second, we have a vote please? And the motion carries four, zero, and one absentee.
Thank you Chairman. Brandon, thank you very much for, I know you came from the city, right? Yeah, so thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five from District Five. Approve the use of ten thousand dollars from Supervisor District Five funds to Seron Lutheran Church Escalon Senior Fund Bunch Program. Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you Chairman. So Escalon Senior Fund Bunch was formed in two thousand and nineteen to support and empower the senior population of Escalon through social events and education. As of January twenty twenty-four, there are over two hundred active members and interest and participation continues to increase. There are no fees charged to seniors to attend their events. The Escalon Senior Fund Bunch is independently managed and administered of and partially supported by Seron Lutheran Church of Escalon, California, and is a five-on-one C three. The program's efforts include creating a social support network and a culture of belonging, promoting good health and providing valuable and pertinent information to seniors with the ultimate goal of improving the participants' quality of life. So I'm requesting to use ten thousand dollars of my supervisor district fund to fund some of their needs. Thank you Chair.
Okay, great. Anyone else like to comment on this? Not open public comment, anyone else like to comment? I see none, I'll bring it back to the board, we do have a motion. We have a motion, a second, a vote please? And the motion carries five-zero, congratulations.
All right, thank you Board.
Yes, sir. Moving on to item number six from the CAO's office. Authorize additional allocation of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, fund twenty-two fifty to fund the completion of previously approved ARPA projects for Waterloo Marotta Fire and Linden Peters Fire.
Good afternoon Chairman and members of the board. Sarah Sickler, Deputy County Administrator with the County Administrators Office. It is recommended that your board authorize the county administrator to utilize funds up to one hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from the American Rescue Act Plan, ARPA, to cover expenses for completing ARPA projects previously approved for Waterloo Marotta Fire and Linden Peters Fire. Thus far, approximately twelve point five million in ARPA funding has been designated for fire-related projects with approximately four point three million already reimbursed to the district. Waterloo Marotta Fire is requesting an additional one hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to complete the build-out of a command vehicle, their dorm room remodel and fifty percent of the remaining balance for their bay office, apparatus bay office build-out. And Linden Peters Fire is requesting an additional thirty-five thousand dollars for the build-out of the command vehicle previously approved. One-time funding is available in ARPA. If approved, approximately three point three million will remain in the fund's reserves. Funding must be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that concludes, if there's any questions, we have both Chief Walter from Waterloo Marotta Fire and Chief Nofstinger from Linden Peters here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve?
Okay, let me open the public comment first. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this item?
Yep. Yep.
The best one of the four-legged friend. But Chairman Via Puda and Board Supervisors, I'd like to just say thank you for the initial ARPA funding. The goal of that has done. You know, what the what the major goal was, I know with our apparatus room, Station Two project, it's cut over two and a half minutes off our response time to half of our district. So from an average response time of eight minutes to just under six minutes, average response time to over three thousand calls a year in the Marotta, in Stockton area. So that's just with that one project. So thank you very much.
Yeah, also from Linden. Yeah, thank you so much for the ARPA funding, it really is going a long way. Our command vehicle, we talk about communications, it's one of our priorities when we're on an incident, this new vehicle, the reason why we needed a little bit more was to get those those radio systems in place on our vehicle. So again, we thank the board, all of you for supporting this and and the the fire districts in their projects. It is going a long way and is helping us to be able to provide the service to the public that we need to do safely and effectively.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we do have a first, we have a motion, I'm going to close the public comment. We have a first and a second, Supervisor Rickman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment real quick, Chair, is that when he just mentioned cutting two and a half minutes off of a response time because of the funding that this board approved, that the board, you know, providing resource to our fire department is huge. I mean, those of you that have ever been in emergency, you know, a minute seems like eternity and cutting two and a half minutes off of that, I mean, that's going to save lives, it probably already has, you know, and so it's just exceptional and people need to realize just two and a half minute may not seem like a lot, but it's huge. So kudos to you guys, you guys do a heck of a job over there, so keep up the good work and thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second, we have a vote please? And the motion carries five-zero, thank you very much gentlemen. Moving on to item number eight, General Services. Receive an oral presentation for the South County Regional Park Planning Phase One and improve and increase appropriations amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand in the DAP two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four public improvement budget for Phase Two. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Chairman Via Pudwa, members of the board. Connie Hart, Assistant Director of General Services, and with me today, you know, Judy Vasfender, our Parks Administrator, and we also have Julian Cho with Vanner, our Construction Management Consultant, and Tony Ortiz, correct, with Bright View. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Judy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, or the Director of County Administrators. Parks and Recreation would like to use this opportunity to submit to you the South County Regional Park Phase One conceptual design. Just to give you a brief background about the property and the project. The property is approximately a hundred acres and is located in Tracy, California, just north of Highway two oh five off of Tracy Boulevard. I'm sorry. Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, you get a little closer. So at, the property is about a quarter mile north of the City of Tracy's Legacy Field Complex. The property was purchased from the City of Tracy in two thousand and ten for the purpose of building a park and is currently leased, has a farm ag lease on it. The beginning in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, all lease payments have been deposited into the restricted fund for their future development of the South County Regional Park. As part of, in January of two thousand and twenty-three, Parks contracted with Vanner to assist with the Phase One, which included initial property evaluations, needs and want assessments, preliminary public outreach and conceptual design. And Julian and and Tony are here today and will be will be going through the conceptual design in a moment. At this point in time, we did conduct a public poll that gathered information to to get, to gauge the public's interest and to gather some preliminary data. The link to the site was sent to about ten thousand nine hundred participants, including employees of Somerville County, direct contacts from the Parks and Recreation Division's contact list. The City of Tracy also agreed it to send to all of their city employees and Parks also utilizes social media like Facebook, Instagram and the Nextdoor neighbor app, Nextdoor. Or sorry, the neighborhood app, Nextdoor. Supervisor Rickman and I also provided an interview to KCRA in December of two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and twenty-three to discuss the project. Of the twelve hundred participants that started the poll, four hundred and fifty-four completed the poll. There was a few takeaways that I just wanted to highlight. The results showed high overall support for the parks, wanting a haven for aquatic activities, especially with the properties access to the delta via the Sugar Cut, the need for shaded picnic areas, tranquil walking trails, and an emphasis on a more passive park. A couple of concerns identified were the cost, budget management, unhoused population, park usage, safety and security. So those were just a few of the concerns. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Julian and to Tony to go through the conceptual design phase.
Thank you Judy, thank you to the board for having us present this Phase One conceptual plan to you today. So Phase One conceptual plan is, it represents a huge milestone in this development of this park. It it sets the foundation and validates the next steps in the development of this park. It represents a culmination and much collaboration efforts that we've done together between the Parks and Recreation, looking at the five-year strategic plan, the City of Tracy and their twenty-year master plan, its residents and a multitude of talented professionals from our Vanner team members. So we want to thank Parks and Recreation and GSD for all their enormous support that they've given us on this effort. So in terms of the design, we've been looking at the park from several different perspectives and angles to figure out what works and what doesn't work and what what makes sense. Given the location, given its relationship with the adjacent communities, its natural features and amenities, including the Sugar Cut and the Legacy Fields and other parks in the community. The goal is to provide a park that will provide a, somewhere that the community can come together, enjoy the outdoor in a passive recreational environment. Not to duplicate what's already out there in the Legacy Field, but to supplement what we don't have, such as creating a aquatic recreational activities through the Sugar Cut. So we wanted to supplement and enhance the community and improve the user experience through that. So again, we want to thank you for this opportunity to present and at this time, I want to introduce Tony Ortiz with Design, Bright Design Group to kind of walk you through that design more in detail.
Thank you Julian. Like introduced, my name is Tony Ortiz, I'm with Bright View Design Group. We went through an exhaustive process looking at where we are in the world and considering what was appropriate here for the regional park. In this diagram, it's kind of taken us through our thought process. You know, we looked at a lot of what the existing amenities that are offered around there. We know we have the sports park, there's lots of active opportunities all around us already. So we thought a very, you know, passive experience might be a place to go and given the map that we saw on the previous slide, you know, our location with the Sugar Cut, the Old River Corridor, we thought we could bring some of that natural energy back into into the park. And so you'll see in the diagram, also with that, looking into that, the program itself, we explored a bunch of different options, you know, with the different activities, knowing what we have around us. And then looking at revenue opportunities, revenue generating opportunities as well. So there's a lot baked into this that we thought about, including security considerations. And you'll so, you'll start to see that as we develop the plan further, as we go through the next couple of slides. So going back to that environmental idea, looking at what's around us is really bringing that natural energy in. So from the Old River Riparian Corridor is kind of bringing that and even in the diagram on the previous slide, you saw how it kind of snaked through the the hundred acres that we have. And so right now, in 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 our terms, what we're calling landscape typologies. And so we think that by giving, you know, a few different environmental zones, we can bring in that energy and provide a really dynamic park. So you'll see in this diagram, on the edges, we have an evergreen edge that supports the edges that gives us a little bit of buffer from what's around us, mostly agricultural. Also provides a little bit of security on our edges as well. And then you have the native meadow that can be actually really spectacular with the native grasses and wildflowers that can blow up in in the springtime, that could actually be a really cool draw as the park gets developed. And then you go into the Riparian Corridor, which will be probably the more dynamic in terms of botanical throughout the park and you'll see nature observation decks, walking paths, biking paths, those kinds of things. And then a real integral part about the educational piece of this and the value it brings to the community would be the Nature Center and Botanical Gardens. So residents, visitors can come and be educated on what the environment is around them from a native perspective, what they can actually do in their own gardens, as well as host classes and other events as well. And then in looking at it in its totality that you can see here, we've kind of looked at it in terms of a of a trails park and and this starts to highlight some of the, you know, some of the features that we might have in the park, given the walking paths, the informal trail paths, and then also cycling paths. And so interwoven into this is getting visitors and residents very tangible experiences in the environments. And so you'll cross through all these different environments as you go through, whether it's the Riparian Habitat, the meadow or the evergreen edge. And so you'll see the interconnectivity that we have here and the access points and you'll see up to the right as that blue corridor makes its way over to the Sugar Cut, which we thought was a great opportunity to be able to get in and access that with kayaks and small vessels of that sort. And we also have an intermediate lake venue in the center that kind of anchors the the project where you can actually practice or participate in that as well. And so there's lots of opportunities here to go out and experience the environment in a more natural setting that we don't necessarily have around us. And so we could probably go to the next slide. And then we have a couple of depictions here about some possible implementation. So you can start to see how vast this might actually be and the type of environment that we'd be creating. And then again, this is the full site plan that you see on the on the screen here. You know, whether it's activities at the cul, or at the Nature Center, outdoor classrooms, botanical gardens, amphitheaters, event spaces. And so there's a lot of capacity that this can host, as well as all those different experiences. And we really wanted to emphasize getting out of your cars and you'll notice in the plan where we have very strategic openings and parking lots, it really keeps everything to the outsides and gives everyone a really nice immersive experience throughout the park. And then you'll see here some conceptual imagery to kind of paint the picture a little bit on some possible amenities. You'll see the cycling paths, the overlooks there for even at the Sugar Cut and launching areas. And it's really about getting people out into nature. And again, a couple of renderings to depict some of this. And so you'll see kind of that waterfront edge and there and that Riparian Corridor that carves through there on the right-hand side. And so we see it as a very natural setting, something that you don't get an opportunity to do very often. As a landscape architect, I appreciate, you know, a project of this size and scope to actually implement something like this. So we can go to the next one.
Thank you guys. So project cost and estimates, we have, the the project has been broken down into four phases. Phase one being the conceptual design that we have just completed. Phase two feasibility environmental, which we will discuss a little bit in a moment further. Phase three, the design build documents, and phase four is RFPR view, construction management and into construction. As like, as you can see, the the project cost estimates right now, close to fifty As you can see, the project cost estimates right now, close to $57 million. And some project schedule estimates, conceptual planning, started that, we finished that now through February 2024, feasibility and environmental through January 2026. Because this is such a large project and it is over 100 acres, we are expecting to have to complete an EIR. So there are times, the timeline includes the EIR completion, time for comment, and final EIR development. Design build from January 26 to November 2026, those are just completing the design build documents, as you can see, is the shortest. We would estimate that we would go to a construction start date in mid-2027, so between November 2026 to mid-summer of 2027, that would be for RFPRFQ, and get those bid documents out and select a contractor, an award winner, I would say, and within about a two-year construction timeframe to get it all completed. So the immediate next steps, it would be Phase Two, which is the comprehensive and feasibility study, the environmental assessment and public outreach. The scope of work in this would be to Phase One conceptual design validation, the assessment, environmental assessment, EIR, some topo surveys, utility infrastructure, some more in-depth public outreach and engagement, and there would be any modifying, any budget updates or scheduling updates, partnership opportunities and potential funding and grant sources, to look at potential funding and grant sources. At this time, as funding becomes available, Parks will look to contract with maybe a grant specialist to assist with grant writing and grant management, and any contract costs associated with that would become at a separate time. So at this time, that concludes our presentation, and we're here for questions.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you all very much for being here. You know, I'm excited to see it back here today. And you're right, you know, when I was, excuse me, I drank my Pepsi and went down the wrong pipe, so that's why I'm coughing. You know, when I was Mayor of Tracy, you know, my big push, you know, my project that I pushed was legacy fields. And then one of the reasons being is, you know, our kids don't have enough places to play sports, and of course, I think everybody on this board realizes the importance of youth sports, and so that was my big push. And the reason I mention that is because you mentioned it, but that was approximately, it was, I think that was over $30 million just to build what we have out there right now. And, you know, we have, of course, Vice Mayor Alicia Davis, Dan Evans, and Councilmember Bedoya, who's just expanded it a little bit more. So they, those three councilmembers understand the need for sports facility and our youth. But you mentioned, you know, that's a great place for, I mean, hey, my daughter played soccer, and you're out there, God, for all, all day, which is a place for families to go. But also, one of the reasons I, you know, I've been a huge advocate for the South County Regional Park is because we don't have one. We're the only, you know, district that doesn't have a regional park. You know, they mentioned, well, you have Mossdale, but Mossdale is pretty much a boat launch with like a couple of picnic tables. And I can tell you, being when I was a kid and growing up in Tracy, and wherever we go, we went to Mickey Grove Park. And I still love Mickey Grove Park to this day. But the design is great. I mean, I love how it kind of meshes with the agriculture, because what we're doing, we're not putting a big forest park there, we're not, you know, making an amusement park, we're getting back to nature, what this land was at one time, right? You know, you have your wetlands, you have your meadows, you have your natural fauna and animals and reptiles and stuff that's native to this area. And I think that's what people want. And I can tell you countless times, people want walking trails and want places to ride their bike. And, you know, I like the campsites, and we talked about, and that would be specific to youth organizations like Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, you know, church groups, you know, for kids and stuff like that, to experience nature, and plus have access to the river, which is awesome, and you can go birdwatching. So I love it. I think it's great. I wish we had the funds, of course, to build it tomorrow, but I know we don't. And, you know, when we spoke about it, myself and Chair, when we had a meeting on this yesterday, the day before, is that I know I've been in touch with our Assembly Member on Parks, and I've been even asked, hey, you got to have, you got to need money for parks, you know, when is this park going to be built? And it was still, you know, before I came to the board. So I know there's money out there from the state, specific to this type of diagram or design. So we should be able to get funding from the state, through the federal government also. I've talked to, and I mentioned, I talked to some businesses in South County that would be willing to, you know, put money toward this. So it won't be all coming from our coffers. And so, I mean, I would love to see us start pushing this very, you know, just keep on pushing it. Because this process or this concept of South County Park has been going on for, what, over 18 years, I think it has been, and nothing has been done. I mean, I know we had funding at one time, some funding, and it got sucked out someplace else. So, you know, thank you very much for being here. I hope people are excited, and thank you for your design. I think it's, it looks, it looks great, and I hope people are just excited as I am about it. So again, great job. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Canepa.
This is huge, though I just worry, when it's this big, how do we maintain it in the future? I mean, we're out in the fishing derby, now they had to put rip rock, and you can't fish over the rip rock. So things like that, is it drought resistant plants, and that, you guys take that all into consideration? Because if you're using natural flow of water and you have a dry year, your water features out the door. I mean, obviously, you're smart enough to figure out stuff like that, but I mean, just going and seeing, especially after that wet, you know, all those trees that are downed and everything, are really important because we still have to maintain it. So I mean, it's grandiose and it's beautiful, and those renderings are amazing. Is it sustainable in the long run is the other question. So I mean, if you build it, I mean, they will come, and obviously, I mean, that happens, you'll get a regional, if it's nice enough, people from all over will go, whether it's frisbee golf or some other amenities that people like to go to and get outdoors. So I mean, those are the things that I just worry about when you see these things. And the 56 million now is 100 million in eight years, you know what I mean, is the only concern. So I mean, I applaud you on that, and I think it's right that if you do build it, that they will come. But I mean, we have to be mindful of those little things because obviously, downed trees stay for a long time, and you know what I mean? And usually, unfortunately, parks pay the first one. As a budget turns to the wrong direction, people go and scrape that money from parks first. So it is, it looks like a beautiful project, and I can't wait to see its fruition.
Thank you.
Supervisor Canepa, to speak to your question through the chair. We are already looking at operational costs, and as you may have noticed, there are a multitude of revenue generating aspects to the design. I don't know if you remember the picture with the overlook over the lake and that building, that would be available for weddings and other kinds of functions, very similar to how we have at Mickey Grove, to offset some of those operational costs. So we're looking at all of that quite diligently. And of course, you're right, there will be increases in costs, but we're going to do what we can to offset those with additional revenues.
That's very exciting. Thank you for that comment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chair. Wow, I know since I've got here, there's always been talk of a South County park, so great job putting together something with the team. When you look at the myriad of things that are being talked about, how many cars, how many visitors would this, in this concept, what are we looking at per maximum occupancy?
Right now, I have an acumen, I did it just kind of annually, it was about 150,000 visitors per year, which would mirror about the size of Oak Grove to begin with. The parking spots, Julian, do you remember the amount of parking spots that we had set aside for this?
Through the microphone, please.
I think, so there's two different spots. I think all in total, there's about 400 with overflow parking.
400 with overflow, okay. Yeah, I love the concept, there's so many opportunities you can go. I've seen venues like this have outdoor amphitheaters, that brings in a whole new turnaround of people coming in and summer festivals and such. You also have, when you look at some, you know, there's paddle boards, there's canoes, there's nature walks, the biking, there's a tapestry of opportunity here to represent nature and, your word.
Tapestry.
Well, the rumor is this park should be named after me, so I wanted to highlight the tapestry of opportunity and the inclusion of nature and all that it represents here. So fantastic job. I know that this will be happening long after I'm gone, but wow, really great job. Thank you. Marcia, this is something you've talked about for a long time, staff, team, everybody that came forward with this. As it evolves and comes forward, that's going to be a great site to see and a fantastic addition to our county. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there a comment? I want to comment, the renderings are beautiful, and I love parks. I live across street from Victory Park, and I think this is a great addition to every neighborhood, especially Supervisor Rickman's district, because he needs parks, a lot of too many trucking businesses there. But no, great job, I just appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it to the public. Are we done here?
Yes.
Any, I'm going to open to the public, anyone from the public that'd comment on this item. I see none, then I will close it and bring it back. Do we need a motion on this item?
Um.
Rickman, do you want, Supervisor Rickman, do you want to speak?
I'm yes.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes. Supervisor Rickman, did you want to make a motion?
I think she had.
Okay.
Chair, part of the recommendation is the increase in appropriations of $850,000 for that Phase Two.
Yes.
Of already kind of committed money.
Okay. So do we need a motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, but before I do, I just wanted to answer. You know, Supervisor Canepa, you mentioned, you know, parks as one of the first things to be cut. And I hope people have realized nowadays that that's not the case. I mean, you look at what happened with COVID, you know, what was the only thing available to everybody was parks, outdoor, you know, recreation. And I think that kind of reviolates what, how important our parks are to our community. And so with that being said, I'll go ahead and make a, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, great. Your second? Do we have a first and a second? We have vote, please.
Through the chair, if I could do a roll call vote, and I can record Patty's vote and affirmative. Supervisor Dean?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Supervisor Rickman?
Yes.
Chairman Bia Poudois?
Yes.
And for the record, Supervisor Patty was a.
Great. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you. Very much.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, Human Resources, accept a report from Human Resources evaluating elected officials' salary within Sandwaking County. Good afternoon, Ms. Goodman.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair of Bia Poudois, members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Jennifer Goodman, Director of Human Resources. At the November 7th Board Meeting, the Board directed Human Resources to return to the Board with a report evaluating elected official's salary. Okay, sorry about that. I will try to speak louder. At the November 7th Board Meeting, the Board directed Human Resources to return to the Board with a report evaluating elected official's salary. So the staff report today does provide to the Board the current salary survey data for five elected officials. Please note that the Board, the staff report does not include an evaluation of the members of the Board of Supervisors, as that was addressed in a separate order at the November 7th Board Meeting, and the results of that was presented to this Board on January 23rd. Sandwaking County does have 10 elected officials, five members of our Board of Supervisors, our sheriff, district attorney, auditor controller, treasure tax collector, and the assessor recorder county clerk. All elected officials are included in the exempt representation unit, and the terms and conditions of those positions are contained in Board Resolutions, which were most recently updated on February 7th. Historically, the Board has chosen to provide the county's elected officials with the same negotiated salary and benefit increases received by our county's largest represented employee group, SCIU 1021. These increases have also been provided to the county's three other unrepresented units, which are the executive management unit, senior management unit, and confidential unit. The current resolution provided elected officials with a total of 18% base wage increases over a 44-month period, a 6% increase in October of 2022, 5% in July of 2023, and we have future scheduled increases, 4% in July of this year, and 3% in July of 2025. The 18% base wage increase for elected officials mirrors the increases that were received by a majority of our county employees in units represented by SCIU, middle management, and all of the unrepresented units over that same period of time. In order to provide the Board with this report, Human Resources conducted a survey of our 10 comparator counties to determine how the total compensation for those five elected officials compare with our other county comparators. The assessment considers the total compensation for the positions, which includes the base salary, deferred compensation contributions, other cash benefits, which depending on the position, could include additional compensation for professional licenses or certifications, auto allowance, as well as the county's contributions for medical, dental vision, and life insurance. As presented in the staff report, the current monthly and annual salary for each elected official is shown, as well as how Sandwaking County's salary compares to the median of our comparators. So in summary, it does show that our assessor recorder county clerk currently is 2.4% below the median of our 10 comparator counties, the auditor controller 10.5% below the median of our comparators, the district attorney 8% below, the sheriff 1.3% below, and the treasure tax collector at 8% below. The staff report also does note that once the 4% scheduled cost of living adjustment, which is scheduled for July of this year, it does bridge that so that the assessor recorder county clerk would actually be above median, our auditor controller would be 6.5% below the median, the district attorney 4% below, the sheriff 2.7% above the median, and our treasure tax collector 4% below the median of our comparators. So in addition to the increase that's scheduled for July, I did note earlier that we have a 3% scheduled in July of 2025, and which would bring all within 5% of the median of our comparators. So this concludes staff report on elected official salaries, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions on the Board? I see none. I'll open the public comment. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? I see none, I'll close public comment, and Supervisor Canepa would like to speak.
So what's the method in which these are, if during the process, changed or amended to get to the meeting? Can you explain that?
So typically during, when we are considering resolution amendments or changes, new resolutions for our unrepresented, including the elected officials, we are also looking at adjustments that we make for our represented employees. So we use really the same methodology that we use when we consider increases for our represented positions as our unrepresented positions. So during those processes, which last happened in preparation for the October 2022 resolution that provided that 18% increase, we conduct a salary survey, much like the one that we did at this point, to provide this update to the Board. And then at that point, Human Resources, working through the Labor Committee, would make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors on if equity adjustments were warranted to ensure that our elected officials were at the median of our 10 comparators. I will say one thing that we do consider as we make recommendations to the Board regarding equities and if they're warranted, is if the cost of living adjustments that we expect to grant will bring the majority of those positions up to the median during the timeframe of that resolution, then we typically would not be making a recommendation for additional equities.
So then, through the chair, so then how do, I mean, obviously, over a four-year term, those numbers are going to be all over the, like now, if you do the, what we just did, I mean, but it can't change for two more years until it's negotiated for the rest of the folks, correct?
The Board, it would require the Board to give direction to make a change of some kind. So it's not that the, obviously, the Board has the authority to make changes to the salary and benefits of all employees, so you always have the option to provide increases if you believe they're warranted.
But contractually, it's tied to the SCIU, right?
Not by contract, but by practice?
No, I mean, just for. No, I mean, just for the term of the, the contract.
Correct. So the resolution that was approved in October of two thousand twenty-two was presented as a term of forty-four months.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. See Roger Patty?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question, so looking right now, current relation to the median, all five categories, that's five positions, right? Assessor/Recorder, County Clerk, those just, are the, the three positions in one category? Or is that one position?
So that is one position. So that's Mr. Vestelerides, our Assessor/Recorder County Clerk. So our county has organized those functions underneath one position.
Understood, thank you. So of these five positions, currently, we're seeing anywhere from two to ten percent under the median, and then we're looking at a relation to after a COLA adjustment in July, it would, that would narrow significantly, if not disappear. However, my question would be, and it's very difficult to play catch-up, but those other agencies that we're doing comparisons to, we're freezing time, let alone what their adjustments might be by July, that, in other words, we'd still be behind the median if we factor in any adjustments, COLA, or negotiations or something that's happening. Is that correct?
It's potentially correct. So that is part of, you know, the methodology that's used. We do apply the same methodology that we use for our represented employees as our unrepresented. You know, one other factor I would just add for consideration, as we, as we look at making equities for our represented employees, we also look at recruitment and retention difficulties. How many vacancies do we have in the position? What's unique about our elected officials, obviously, is these are positions for which people seek, based on, and, and based on the understanding of what the compensation is at the time. And so for some of these agencies, while there may be some, some changes, and others there may not be, because the way some counties approach elected official salaries is they actually set it for the entire term. So they may conduct a salary survey at the beginning before a term is initiated, and then when somebody applies and submits candidacy for that position, they'll understand what the salary is for that entire term. And then cost of living adjustments are not granted to that position as, so they're not kind of handled the way that our county handles them, where we always are granting the COLAs and providing that to our elected officials. They would set the salary for that four-year term, and then they would not consider any changes to that salary until the next term. So in some ways, for some of these positions, you may not actually see the same type of movement that you would for a represented group, where we would see those costs of livings, expect to see those being applied throughout the terms.
So one of the questions I would have is the disparity, like what's the high and what's the low for us to understand the median? But if we're looking at, and I think we've established in this county in the past with a different Board, that we wanted equity, we want, we didn't want disparity in pay, we've got a busy, booming Sandwaking County, there's a lot of work going on, a lot of great people that do great jobs, but, you know, I, I'm looking at that we're below the median right now, and, and in some ways rather significantly, and that's a little bit concerning. And these are things that we can control, it has no reflection on us. We, the Board of Supervisors, we're bottom of the barrel. We're treated as the garbage of the room, and, you know, we have the lowest salary of anybody in the county. So, you know, but this is something that we could have an effect with. So, you know, pleasure to the rest of the Board members, but I'd be in favor of bringing these salaries to the median.
Anyone else like to speak? Any other speaker? See whether they.
For comparisons, I'm sorry, it's, it's a combination of ten counties, five counties?
It is, it is ten counties that we compare to.
Anyone compares to?
Yes. Would you like to know the exact ten counties?
I would love that.
Okay. We have Alameda, Contra Costa, Fresno, Kern, Sacramento, Santa Clara, Sonoma, Stanislas, Tulare, and Ventura.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I guess right now it's just a report, or we need a motion or anything? Just an informational item?
You can accept the report, you can make a motion to accept the report.
Okay, we're going to accept the report, no action? Okay, we'll accept the report and move on? Okay?
I, I think, I think it's contemplated to be a motion made to accept the report.
Okay, I get a motion to accept the report. Do you have a second? I have a second. We have a first and a second, we have votes, please? Motion, passion, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the report. Moving on to item number ten. OES approved the purchase of two vehicles for the Office of Emergency Services, not to exceed two hundred K, with offsetting revenue from the American Rescue Plan Act funds and related budget adjustments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Chair, good afternoon, how are you doing?
How are you, Chairman?
Sure, thanks.
Well, thank you very much. One of my roles has been to establish our newly created department as a standalone within the county. As a result of that, we've identified several resource needs, and this particular item reflects those needs. We currently have eleven employees and only two vehicles assigned to our fleet, one of which is a pickup truck that isn't capable of towing all of our equipment. The addition of these two vehicles will double our fleet and provide adequate vehicular resources for our department. Specifically, you'll see one of the vehicles requested is a pickup truck capable of towing over thirty-one thousand pounds. As we grow as a department, we also increase our deployable assets to protect the county and its residents during times of emergency. Our deployables now include UTVs, a one hundred kilowatt generator, lights, showers, and a forklift, just to name a few. A recent purchase is a trailer weighing over fourteen thousand pounds, which can deploy some or all of these assets. Unfortunately, our current vehicles cannot tow that weight, leaving us to rely on other vehicles that may exist in the county. This can be very difficult and unreliable during times of emergency, as each department has their own responsibilities and personnel challenges. These vehicles will reduce our reliance on others, eliminate most vehicular rentals or outside vendors, and allow us to deploy, train with, and maintain our equipment so it is available when needed. The SUV is intended for director use and will be equipped with a tow package that allows us to deploy smaller assets throughout the county, freeing up the use of our trucks for our heavier equipment needs. It will also allow us to deploy multiple assets to different locations simultaneously. Both vehicles will be outfitted as emergency vehicles and should fill, fulfill our need for the foreseeable future. So with that, I submit our request for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Chair? See Roy's of Rickman?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I just want to say, Director, that it's apparent that you're a man of style and understand the importance of presentation. You know, wearing that shirt and tie looks, looks great.
Thank you much.
No, I, hey, I.
Know your audience.
Both of your wives dress.
No, hey, I, I support it, and, you know, you just look at, was it last year or a year before, when we had the, you know, all that rain, and historically, what has happened? OES has to be able to, you know, bring out those resources as, you know, emergency responder when you're more square, you know that. And so, yeah, I think it's, I approve it, I think it's a good job. Give us a good word.
Okay, anyone else from the Board?
And, um, just real quick, Chair?
Yes.
Um, we should be done here about two thirty. You want to take Supervisor Patty? Should we take him out to see if he wants to, you want to go get some dress shirts and ties or anything? No, uh, just saying.
See what the Camper. Jealousy is once again reared its ugly head.
I just appreciate it. At the, at the trunk of tree, I think you had the trailer out there and saw, and there was a lot of equipment that obviously needed moving, so I saw the need, because I think you'd have to borrow the truck to get it out there, so, um, I, it's definitely needed, so, thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right, you're, you're deserving, it'd be good for the, for the job. We'll move to public comment right now, anyone else in the public would like to speak? Any comment? I see none, I'll close public comment. We got a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second, we're good to go. Vote, please. Yes. And approve five zero, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay, moving on to item number eleven, and the last one. Behavioral Health adopted a presentation from Behavioral Health Services regarding a substance use disorder service system of care.
Thank you for saving best for last, allowing us to stay here all day. So Genevieve Valentine, your guys' Behavioral Health Director, I am actually going to pass it over to our Deputy Director over Substance Abuse and Community Support Services, Betty, Betsy Pettis, and our Chief Mental Health Clinician over Substance Abuse and Co-Occurring Programming, Chelsea Rambo.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay, there we go. Thank you. First, thank you Supervisor. Oh. Okay. Anyway, first of all, thank you Supervisor Patty for inviting us to do our presentation on SUD services. I also want to just acknowledge quickly, if I may, I have two staff, Joaquin Vivera, who is one of our managers in Substance Use Disorders, and then also our analyst, John, and I'm not going to attempt to say your last name, John, people butcher it, but he's our analyst that keeps all of our contracts straight, keeps me organized as well. So I just wanted to start with that. So timeframe, how, because it tells me where I need to cut back on, I provided a really robust presentation, and so I think what I'm going to do, just for the sake of time, I'm sure all of you are hungry, but I'll go through the data just to kind of show an overview of what is prevalent here in Sandwaking County, based on the services that we provide to the individuals that are coming in, and then I'll really focus our time more on the services that we have here within our community of Sandwaking County. So, um, does she have it? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, so I'm in. Do you want me to go ahead? Okay. Okay, so, you know, I can have the visual, but I'll at least paint the picture for you. So as I mentioned, I wanted to kind of give a snapshot of what we see that comes into our system and the services that we've provided. That is all of our SUD treatment providers within Sandwaking County, that's a part of our system of care. We get our data that I'm going to be showing you in the next few slides. It's from our reporting, our statewide reporting system that is called CALLOOMS, it's our California Outcome Measurement system. Besides measuring what the substance use of choice is, it also looks at demographic data, administration of the substances, frequency, criminal background, physical and mental health, so kind of a variety of things, and so it just enables us to kind of look at the program efficacy, and then also the treatment episode and improvements being made. So the first thing that I wanted to show is just kind of paint a picture, as I said, that the top three substances that we see coming into treatment, and again, people can pick a primary and a secondary substance of use, and so heroin is the, it's opioids altogether, but heroin is the top one with eight thousand two hundred and five, and then, and this is for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, I apologize, you can't see all that up there. And then also other opioids and synthetics at four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine, and then oxycodone and oxycontin at one thousand one hundred and fifty. So clearly, obviously, the, as we stated, the top three coming into services that we see here in Sandwaking County are all opioids. The next graph actually breaks it down by age, and again, just kind of reiterates the age populations of people coming in, twenty-two to twenty-nine, other opioids and synthetics is what we're seeing with that age range, also thirty to thirty-nine, forty to forty-nine, it's the same. It's not until middle, middle age, fifty to fifty-nine, that we actually start seeing heroin, there, yeah, there we go, where heroin becomes the primary drug of choice. And then if you just flip through the next slide, and that continues, the heroin use continues through sixty, sixty-nine, and then seventy to seventy-nine, it's heroin, and then it just, eighty and above, when we see these people come into services, it's other opioids and synthetics. So basically, what we're just trying to paint a picture of is clearly, it doesn't matter what age group that is coming into us, what their substance of choice is. Then we just broke it down by gender, again, heroin is the primary substance that is being reported by the people that we serve throughout our system of care. Making sure we're staying, I'm trying to move quickly through this, and then further breaking it down, looking at ethnicity, and again, heroin, for the most part, for all of the ethnicities provided here, except for Native American and other Asian and Pacific Islander. One thing to keep in mind is that people can have more than one treatment episode, so some of these numbers may be duplicated, just based on, as we mentioned, oftentimes people don't get it the first time, and we see them two and three times, but this is throughout our entire system of care, and that'll make more sense to you when I get to show you what our flow chart looks like. Just some data as far as our overdose data in Sandwaking County, this is actually from the California Overdose Surveillance Dashboard. There's, I have, there was a hundred and thirteen deaths in year two thousand twenty-two related to any opioid overdose in Sandwaking County, three hundred and fifteen emergency department visits related to any overdose in Sandwaking County, ninety-three hospitalizations, and then three hundred and seven, three hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight prescriptions for opioids, which actually was a decrease from the year before, small decrease, but every little bit counts with this epidemic, so. I wanted to provide more of a visual, if you're like me, I'm a visual learner, but this is a map of Sandwaking County. Anything other than white is an opioid, a death due to an opioid overdose, and so obviously the darker color, the deeper red, those are the more prevalent areas for overdose. Again, I, I hope you got a few questions, I'm flying through this. So this one I really like, it's actually broken down by zip code. What's interesting here is the red line is the California average, and then Sandwaking County is obviously the green line. As you can see, above that, we still have quite a few zipped codes that are, actually, their average is higher than what we even have in Sandwaking County, even though we're, we're doing well compared to the state average. I did also, for many of you, you probably recognize a lot of those zip codes. I did break them down, and just going from above the red line, there are six Stockton zip codes that are listed above the red line. We had two, two of them were Tracy, we had smaller communities, the nine-five-two-three-seven, which again, you probably recognize that, that's actually Lockford. So it's interesting that they're there, the second highest, and that's a very small community, so, just, just another way to kind of interpret this, and to, I don't know if you make sense of it, but meaning just the overdose rate, so.
Do you have percentage?
Excuse me?
Percentage or what?
It, it's per one hundred thousand residents. I know I'm going through this quick, so if you have questions, I'm not that you can't ask questions now, but I'm just trying to make sure I get everything out, so. The next one again is just breaking it down, again, just another way to look at it from age range, obviously being thirty to thirty-four years old is where we are seeing most of our overdose deaths. I know in Sandwaking County, just in, just sitting on a lot of the boards around opioid overdose and the epidemic, we know that fourteen to thirty-four is the age range that we're really targeting, because they, we have the most overdose in that age range, next to the thirty to thirty-four. And then I just think it's worth noting that less than children that are under five, obviously, they're not doing that willingly, and so a lot of those deaths are happening accidental just by likely parents, or they're having opioids in the house, so. Okay. Some good news, this is our pharmacotherapy compliance, this was actually a state mandate that we participated in, which is to increase med compliance to a hundred and eighty days or more for clients in services, and so this is access to medication for addiction treatment. So the thing to really note here is that the state compliance average is thirteen point five percent, and Sandwaking County is all the Um, in San Juanquin County is all the way to the left, um, at 43, my glasses are, they're not even working, but I have it, 45%, so we're doing something right, and that's what kind of leads me to, um, our next slide, which is, um, our services that we have here in San Juanquin County. The last time I was here and did a presentation, it's been a while, on SUD Services. We were still in the process of building up our SUD Services, um, according to the state mandate and the Drug Medicale Organized Delivery System. Um, we are required to have, um, all the different levels of care, which I will get into, um, on another slide. Um, and we have accomplished that over and above. So, this is just a slide to give you an idea of how big our system of care is. That is all SUD Services there, that are offered here in San Juanquin County, that, um, our community can access. I'll break that down on the next slide. So, just to give a different picture, um, our network providers, um, above that, it's our beneficiary access line, but then our network providers, starting with on the left, our outpatient providers. The first program that you're going to see, like an outpatient CCC, Family Ties, and Recovery House, those are all county ran programs. Soon, we will add a co-occurring, um, a co-occurring outpatient program. Um, but we have, uh, the levels of care, where it says LOC, that's a level of care. So, for outpatient treatment on the left column, um, that's, uh, that's Chemically Dependent Counseling Center, is a rowed square, um, then the level of care that we offer there is outpatient and intensive outpatient, that's what the 1.0 and the 2.1 is. Um, and then recovery services, formerly known as, um, kind of like aftercare treatment services. However, a couple of years ago, the state now allows for us to, um, have, people can enter into recovery services, um, at any time during their recovery. So, for people that have been incarcerated and they come out, they can go into recovery services, if that, that's what they feel is best for them. It's not uncommon for people that are in recovery to actually, um, I thought so much to take a break, but just because of things in their life and work, they might step away from like going to AA or NA or supportive services. And so, oftentimes, people want to come back into services. So, um, we kind of allow them to enter in at any time that just, um, works for them. Um, just going down, we have Towns Health, they have actually two clinics, actually three, there's one in Galton and two in Lodi now, New Directions, um, has an outpatient program. And then, we also have, um, two out-of-county providers, um, Nirvana and Redwood Treatment Centers that are located in Stanislaus County, which we utilize quite a bit. Um, just something to note on our residential treatment, we do have specific populations that we treat there. Family Ties is a perinatal and women and children program, which, um, is, um, greatly needed in our community. Um, we work well with the dependency court, collaborative courts for referrals into that program. Our Recovery House, you'll see it has a Recovery House, the level of care is 3.2, 3.1, and 3.5. So, 3.2 is actually a withdrawal management, so people that are coming into services that are withdrawing from substances, but they've had a medical clearance, and, um, we receive the documentation that says that they're safe to be in a program, they can come in there. Typically, they'll spend any time from 24 to 72 hours in withdrawal management. And then, they'll step down to more of an intensive, um, level of inpatient services, and then transition to the lower level of inpatient, um, treatment. And then, the hope is that they will also transition into outpatient. So, um, again, Circle of Friends, it actually is an all-male program, and also serves our 290 population, which is much needed, just with, um, they're difficult to place people, 290s are sex offenders, and so, it just, um, gives us a place for when they're coming in and wanting to, um, seek recovery. So, and then again, listing Redwood is an all-women's facility, and Nirvana is, has homes for men and women. I think it's worth noting that our medically managed currently, right now, we use San Juanquin County, or San Juanquin General Hospital, uh, for our medically managed population, and then they will step down into withdrawal management. Shout out to the Be Well Campus, because we'll be able to have a medically managed, uh, facility there. So, I'm excited about that, I'm sure the hospital is too. Our MAT providers, so it only lists, shows that we have three there, but actually, Aegis has six locations with, uh, throughout San Juanquin County, so, um, it makes it, um, more accessible to our, um, clients. And then, there's MedMark, and then the San Juanquin General, um, Hospital Bridge Program, that is our pain management clinic that we have there, and we work very closely, um, through our Substance Use Navigator and the doctors that they have there. Recovery Residence, that is kind of, um, people enter into Recovery Residence, what used to be known as sober living homes. So, um, Recovery Residence is a step up for, uh, certification for a sober living environment. Um, we typically use those homes for when people have, um, maybe they've started a residential, transition to outpatient, and then, um, while they're in outpatient, they can go into one of the Recovery Residences, um, just to kind of have a, uh, environment where there's no drugs and alcohol. So, um, something to note is that Valley Sober Living actually has, they're now called Sea of Change, but, um, they actually have 11 facilities, so although it looks like we just have the six up there, um, we have quite a few. We've really grown in that area, which is, it's helped across the board, not only for our people that are in SUD Services, but also our justice system, we place a lot of people within our mental health system into those programs. So, um, an area that we need to grow, we're in compliance, but, uh, with the state, but we do, we do need to grow is our youth outpatient and youth residential. Across California, um, the majority of counties actually contract with Tarzana Treatment Centers. Um, they're a huge program in LA County, um, a great program, we've actually referred youth to that program. Um, but it's just, there's, there's a high need, and there's not a lot of providers, and so, and there's, um, not in our area as well. So, um, again, shout out to the Be Well Campus, because we will, um, also have that there, so excited about that. Um, and then our youth outpatient, we do have that in our, um, county ran program. Um, so, all right, I know that's a lot of information.
Do we have a point where there's something actionable?
As far as?
What we're talking about, like, there's things that we're talking about, needs and things that are in other areas, but where are we going with this? Where, what are we getting here?
Okay.
I will get there for you. So, there is no actionable item today, this is a warm-up for the actionable item that you will have at the next board meeting, which will be our Be Well Campus, and a few other things. This is just setting the stage that you guys have a variety of information to be prepared for.
Would you like for me to continue? Would you like for me to continue? Okay.
Yeah, we have, yeah, I need to go out there, and we'll wait for the next meeting, and we're good for that.
Okay.
Thank you for that presentation.
No questions?
Any questions? Supervisor Rickman.
Yeah, I had, uh, I think the same question Supervisor Ding had. The numbers that you were showing in the graphs and stuff, is that a percentage, or is that the actual number?
So, those are cases, uh, well, it depends on which graph you're speaking about.
Like the deaths.
Right, um, so those are, um, that's from our Surveillance Dashboard, um, the California Surveillance Dashboard. So, I showed it in different, um, ways, so.
Okay, can you?
There were numbers of deaths, there was one I reported that was number of deaths.
Well, can you, um, go back to the, you had the, the bars?
Where Lockford was number one.
With all the zip codes. What's that?
Where Lockford was number one.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
That was all by zip, zip codes.
All the zip codes?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one?
Uh, the one before that, I think, or before that, well, one of them.
Yeah, it was the one after the map.
That, that, that one?
Yeah.
So, what does that represent? Does it represent, um, individuals, or is that a percentage?
It's individuals per 100,000.
Okay, so for example, Lawford, I think that would be 30 something per 100,000 resident, that's what it means?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was.
Supervisor Ding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just, one thing you didn't mention, because I, I know you wanted to give a shout out to the Be Well Campus, so I just thought I'd mention that, because you haven't mentioned that yet today.
Shout out to the Be Well Campus.
There we go. Thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Supervisor Patty, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. A quick question, on the opioid overdose, there's 113, is that including fentanyl, or is that a separate, uh, subject?
It's all opioids, all opioids.
So, yes, including?
Yes.
Fentanyl, do we know how many of those deaths are fentanyl-related?
Um, not on this, but I can get that for you.
That's, that's helpful, Director Dietrich.
I, I just comment, I think there's, uh, different statistics, uh, if you get from the, the state, uh, you get different statistics versus, uh, our Office of the Medical Exam Runner, because, uh, somebody might have died with, uh, fentanyl on board, but it might not be the cause of death, so I, I think there's different statistics. And then, as far as prevalence rates, one of the things we did during COVID was stand up a biobot, which was a wastewater surveillance with, uh, contracts with five different districts, and we're looking to expand that to, uh, also do surveillance on, uh, uh, fentanyl. So, we'll have, uh, some statistics on where there might be, uh, higher rates of fentanyl use in the community.
Excellent, the reason why I ask is, that's about the same number, I believe it was like one or two years ago, so we've either hit a plateau, or fentanyl is 50, 80% of this, I don't know, but, uh, or, maybe our efforts are paying off, is where I want to go with that. So, uh, appreciate it, and really good information, daunting, the, the statistics.
Very much so.
I mean, look at some of these area codes, I know these area codes, I grew up in some of these area codes, so, um, very concerning. Thank you.
Supervisor Rickman, would you like to begin?
Yeah, just real quick, Chair, um, I know we talked about op, or talking about opioids, but what about like meth, or even alcohol?
So, um, I mean, it's, it's prevalent, what, um, the data that I gave you, when I reported about, um, opioids being the top three substances.
Right.
So, that comes from the people that have actually entered into treatment services within San Juanquin County, and that system of care that I showed you, so, um, that is what, those are the three top substances that they've reported. So, it's not that their meth isn't used, it's not that out, I believe it was a compo that had, alcohol was actually their, um, substance of choice, they were like the only ones, but, um, so we were just trying to give a snapshot of what we're seeing that are coming in, but those are likely, that's also maybe a fourth, um, substance that they use, but the reporting system gives you the opportunity to put your primary in like a secondary. But, uh, it's definitely there, and we can give you a breakout as far as like all the substances that are reported, and how many, I was just trying to.
No, I, I understand, I, I was just, you know, just curious, because you do see a lot of meth out there.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, heroin was on a decline for years, so heroin's back, back in the forefront again. You know, of course, we all knew about oxy and all that, you know, different.
And a lot of times, it's not always, but when you look at the, uh, the rationale behind it, it's an opioid, and so, it's a similar effect, and so, that's why you see the transition from one to the other.
No, you know.
Not always, but.
Yeah, I mean, I thank you for bringing this forward, I mean, this board, and we've talked about for the last few years now, the last at least two or three years, or three years, I could say, about the need for substance abuse treatment, and telling everybody about, you know, the dangers of, you know, well, the reason we need substance abuse treatment, and can people, you know, the health they need, this shows it. I mean, putting graphs and statistics so people, you know, you know, that, that watch this can actually see what's going on out there, and this is why this board is spending, spending tens of millions of dollars and fighting to make sure we have substance, you know, substance abuse, abuse treatment facilities, the medication that goes along with it, and also, you know, the, um, uh, psychiatric help that a lot of, you know, drug dependency, um, goes along with. So, I hope people realize that this board, you know, we're, we're on the forefront of this, and, um, we're pushing, pushing, pushing to get more, um, beds, to get more treatment. My, I think we talked to our congressman to carry a bill over there in Washington because of the same reason. So, thank you very much, and I think it's very, very educational, and, um, hopefully, people will see this. So, thank you.
Okay, this time I'll open a public comment, anyone like to speak in public? Greg, no comment? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment and bring you back to the floor, thank you for that presentation. Do we need a motion to carry on, or is it just a, uh, okay, great, motion to adjourn then? Thank you for that, and then I guess we're done, we'll have Supervisor comments? Supervisor reports?
Yeah, can we limit ti, can we limit time?
Supervisor Cantor, give us the, the full version of yours, every day, what time you put your shoes on.
Here we go. UOP, UOP, UOP opened Pickle and Adele, um, last week, uh, Carlos and the Miracle Mile, that I went, attended that, uh, SJ cog, they're $20 million, um, Continuum Care, uh, meeting at the Public Library, SJ Health, um, the clinics, we met with the, uh, the board members, uh, DES and Operation DES Strong at Hot Yoga. We did Dancing with the Stars for the dogs and cats, and Supervisor Patty and I went and danced our fishes off to raise money for, uh, for the APL.
And Supervisor Cantor, I heard you beat Supervisor Patty pretty much hands down.
Yes, we, we both did in place, so if that means anything. Not, not very stellar, but it was fun, great event, uh, and it did, uh, what it was intended to do, raise money for, um, Spanneuter Clinic. We had a town hall meeting, and it's difficult, because I wish more people would come out, a lot of people always say that we're not, uh, you know, out there in the community and available, and, um, nobody showed up to that, unfortunately. We had, uh, the Builders Exchange, there was a, uh, breakfast, Jafka's been going full blast, um, and then, we also, I also attended, uh, the Registrar Our Voters, we did, uh, and it's to test the integrity, um, and I think there was 20,000 test ballots, and then, there, I, the question is, is when there's things like that, more people that are concerned about that need to show up and, and go and be part of the process. It was the Registrar Our Voter had it, and we were able to go in their office and look and learn, um, and it was very helpful. So, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Hale, the Registrar Our Voters, for opening that up and, uh, providing everybody those sample ballots, so that they could actually see how the process worked. And then, um, it's been busy, and I think that's about it. I went to, attended the Lodi Grape Festival, the, uh, Scholarship Dinner, um, with Supervisor Ding, and, um, the other one was End It, which was our Officer Family, um, Justice Center, so, those are just a few of the events. So, thank you.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, couple of things, I'll make it quick, uh, over the weekend, we had our 62nd anniversary of the Almond Blossom Festival, the parade and so on, over in Ripon, awesome thousands, I mean, literally thousands of people are in downtown Ripon, I think they had like 80 participants. Supervisor Cantor and his wife were there, got to see them on the sidelines cheering me on, it was a Rickman, you know, I was all that, I appreciated it, that's, you know, teamwork right there, but it, it's, um, you know, Ripon is a great, is a great city and a great place to, you know, raise a family. And, um, it just goes to show you, you know, traditions, how important traditions are. I mean, you want your city to have, um, remain great, remain that great city that, that you live in, traditions are very, very important. Also, over the weekend, we had our, the, or attended a third annual Last Corporal Jared Smith Memorial Pub Crawl, and, you know, I, I took a drink for, um, Mike Anderson's, Supervisor Patty, Chief of Staff, his son, and, um, great, great, uh, community to support to help, uh, fund ratings for our veterans. And lastly, I want to say, you know, we had, um, was it last week, I believe it was last week, it seems like these days just merge on, but we had our press conference, um, in regards to the PG&E's proposed rate increase, and I want to say, you know, thank you to KDR PIO here, you know, you can stand up, let everybody see you, huh? For coordinating that, I want to say thank you to Assemblymember Carla Filipudora for attending. Um, Andrew, who was here today with our Farm Bureau, was there, we had local businesses like Workline 209, and our Tracy Chamber, Maria, so thank you, everybody who came out for that. I mean, if we're going to, you know, we all need to be in this together, we're gonna oppose these, and hopefully defeat these proposed rate increases, unfair rate increases by PG&E. And also, I attended several, several DARE programs, um, so thank you to Steve Abercrombie and the schools that put those on every year, I think I've been doing them for 15 years. But lastly, I just want to ask, um, what's going on with our audio equipment and stuff here? I mean, it's, it's, it feels like it's been going on for like three years, I mean, um, is there an issue? I mean, is there, ISD has issues, I thought we just put in a bunch of new, a new system, but we're still continually having problems, either, you know, a lot of the times is our audio, if you're watching from, um, um, from, you know, remotely, it's echoing, or you're not hearing, you know, the board, and it's, it's getting really, really frustrating, because there's a lot of information that, you know, staff puts up, and this board needs to communicate to, and people that are watching remotely can't hear us. And, I mean, I don't know how many times this board has to complain about it, you know, if, I mean, I'll end it there, but something needs to be done, because it's, it's just, now it's getting ridiculous, it's getting to a point of being ridiculous. So, we talked about transparency and accountability, there needs to be accountability here when we're talking about, um, our audio stuff. With that being said, oh, lastly, March 5th, make sure you vote, um, we have, you have the ballots, you can either drop them off, you can put them in the mail, you can drop them in the drop boxes, you can drop them off here. So, you know, please, you know, use your, use your voice and vote. So, with that being said, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, staff, for today.
Thank you, we're going to, Supervisor Ding.
Yeah, just a, a couple of things, one, we had a going-away party for Nicole Lee last week, and I thought what was really interesting was the amount of notes she kept on, like, all of her original onboarding meetings and, um, little notes, but the one thing that she said that sticks out in my mind when I think of Nicole is But the one thing that she said that sticks out in my mind when I think of Nicole is just be kind. So that was a good reflection. I want to wish, excuse me, everybody who's running for election next Tuesday, will be eating ice cream and waiting for the results. But I, I want to thank everybody for stepping up the plate regardless of winner or loser. Thank you for your commitment and best elect to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Patty.
Thank you Chair, I'll be brief here. First off, in San Juanquin County, we look at what we're doing, what more we can do. Our sheriff was very progressive, he was steadfast, one of these campaign issues he talked about is cutting recidivism. I went, I was able to go to the first graduating class for the MC3 Apprentice Program in partnership with the trades, it was absolutely fantastic. And you saw these young men going through the program and, and the pride they had when it was all done and they were recognized and they got their certificates. I went up and looked at some of the things that they made and these young men came over like, I made that, I just stained it yesterday, look at this, and they just took pride for the first time of actually having made something and, and have something on display. That's something that we, a lot of us might take for granted, but, but that meant a lot to these young men, and I was glad to have been there for it. And they also recognized I was their favorite supervisor, they watch in the jailhouses apparently. So also want to recognize our going to the Veterans Meeting, Peter Ragsdale, we had out at Victory Gardens, there were a few issues of management and some of the residents. So we partnered with Peter Ragsdale to go out there, sit down, talk, listen, and Peter Ragsdale confirmed that they're going to be having monthly meetings out there, engaging with, with, with the residents and making sure there's a full partnership to address some of the issues and, and come to good understandings on, on things that we can do different or better. Our DEA, of course, as we know, had commemorated the Human Trafficking Month this past January. Also want to note that the Family Justice Center had a human trafficking training at County Office of Education, Chief of Staff and I had engaged in that and appreciate all the dedication for many people throughout the county looking to fight this evil that's going on around us. We also have the Altamont Corridor Express, had a big celebration at the Cabral Station, rounding up the corner here, finishing up. We had a Buddhist church interfaith tea that was hosted on the 15th of February. We have this coming up Thursday, the annual Rotary Read-in, myself and some of you also will be participating, myself and Chief of Staff Mike Anderson are going to do second grade at one of our local schools, we picked out our books yesterday. And I have to say, we supported shopping local, we supported local jobs. Some people order online and those, it just, it doesn't help our local economy nearly as much as if you go to a local store where there are young students aspiring for a better tomorrow. So showing up, making sure they have a job was one of the most important, really one of the most rewarding things I did yesterday. So I appreciate doing that. Lastly, tonight at Chief of Staff for District Two, Ms. Calder's Restaurant, Michael's Pizza on Alpine, they're going to be hosting a Animal Protection League fundraiser. I was lucky enough to snag one of these tickets, it's a hot commodity and a great place to be, fantastic food and a good time for a local cause. Thank you Chair, that's all at this time.
Thank you. Okay, that moved, that is, March.